To the good order, this concurrent meeting of the school administrative unit number 12 in the Lunenary School District this evening, Tuesday, February 20th, 2007, at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to ask Paul Margolin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Paul, you could remain standing, I'm gonna catch you. Everybody else can sit though. For those of you that don't know, Paul has made some decisions based upon his business to not run again this year, although his name will be on the ballot, and I've told everybody they can still vote for him. And then we'll be in a situation where if he chooses not to run, the school board will have to select someone. Or chooses not to serve, the school board would have to select someone, and if we have a tie, the town council gets to select someone. So while you're all thinking about that, we have a little something for Paul. And we'd like to thank him for his years on the board, and I'd like to congratulate him.
I do want to say that it's since I first walked in, since I went and visited a curriculum committee meeting about seven or eight years ago, delivery of public education Lundary has just held a real attraction for me, and I can see why folks like Dan and Ron have stuck with it as long as they have. Something special about it. Maybe if there are another four or five hours in the day, I would try to stick with it a little longer myself. In particular, I have to say, with respect to your staff here, Nate, with all the accomplishments, all the accolades that seem to just keep coming, it's hard for me to believe that there is a superintendent in New Hampshire with a senior staff with more talent and more commitment to delivery of education to the children in this town than the people in this room. It's been a distinct pleasure to work with you all, and it's just been a delight and a privilege to serve on the board, so thank you.
Give you, Paul. I understand that Adelphi or Comcast, whoever they are, are going to be disconnecting the cable, so you won't have to scream at the television on Tuesday nights. Just a little therapy. The next item on the agenda, we have some questions, announcements, and presentations. Jim, are you, would you like to get started here? I do.
This is kind of a pretty neat night, because we get to bring a variety of our wonderful students from Lunenary High School here for a variety of different reasons, but the one thing that they all have in common is that they're all great kids, or I should say, young adults. Whether they're athletes, whether they're scholars, or whether they're both, one thing that you always find, the kids who are the achievers, and the kids who do everything that you love for kids to do, they are the type of children that you would love to call your own children. And many of these kids, or all of these kids here tonight are that. And so we have three different awards, types of awards. And the first one is a great pleasure. Every year, we seem to get one, maybe two, National Merit finalists. And I think we kind of take it for granted, because in talking to principals around the state, they hope for one every five years, but in Lunenary, we seem to get at least one every year. And this year is no exception. This year, we have an exceptional young man who achieved the National Merit finalist level, and that is Nathan Jealous. Nathan, can you please come up? I also would like mom and dad to remain standing, because we knew, we know you had something to do with it. Now, just as finding a young man, but for a different award, and I've known this young guy since first grade, he's quite a talented soccer player, but even more so, he's a great young man. I see Mrs. Mack smiling, because I remember, I think we kicked him off the playground once, because he would never give anybody else the soccer ball. He stood against the wall for us. Not because he misbehaved, but no one can catch him. But Robbie McLoney, who is only a junior, mind you, okay, is this year's New Hampshire Gatorade Player of the Year, and he is also a National High School All-American in soccer. Robbie McLoney? And Robbie's mom and dad are there, and they should stand up too. Parents, but they are also very supportive parents of education in Lunenary, and we thank them for that. Back in February, I had the pleasure with our athletic director, Koby, to attend a ceremony in Concord. And we've done this, at least I've done it for the last three years, and we do it on the girl's side, and we do it on the boy's side, and next month, we'll get to announce the boy winners. But there is such a thing called a New Hampshire Scholar-Athlete. So here's a combination of both the athletics and also the academics, and there's one other piece for it. Everyone who gets this award in the state of New Hampshire has to maintain a B-plus grade point average. So that's one standard. The other standard is that they have to have played two different varsity sports, including one during their senior year. And the last standard, which I think is the most important standard, is they have to have good citizenship and good leadership. And fortunately, most of our kids seem to fall into that category. Now, this year is the largest that Lunenary has ever had. We actually had 18 girls receive this award. I think last year, we were really blown away with nine, but this year, it's 18, which is tremendous. And when we went there, and all the towns were there, I think there was only one school in the state that actually had more than 18 students. It happened to be a private school, I don't want to say that, but we probably had the largest public school numbers for Scholar-Athletes in the state of New Hampshire. And they're not all here tonight, because being a Scholar-Athlete, we also have a basketball game going on. And I know Missing tonight playing basketball, and there might be a few other missing. We have Steph Murphy, we have Justine LeBlanc, and we have Lindsay Pendisio. They are right now playing basketball across the street. And I know, as soon as we give these awards, a lot of these girls are probably going to run across the street to watch them, because it's also senior night over there. So I would like the girls to come up, and then I will let you know who they are. Come on up, girls. Hey. We have, both crossed, so this way the cameras can see it. Justin Mufette, Kristen Brede, Heather Johansson, Lindsay Fanning, Kirsten Williams, Stephanie Zamaske, Megan McEckren, Megan Hershey, and Jamie Lawson. So these are some of our Scholar-Athletes. Missing, I'm gonna try and see, Napoleon Charest is also one, she's not here tonight, Ali Colachi, Lauren Devay, oh, Reeve Brady, and Kelsey Dickerson. And the girls that I mentioned that were Amanda Stewart, and then the girls who were at the basketball game, playing basketball. So I would like to hear a New Hampshire email Scholar-Athlete.
Why don't you show them what you got, please? Then Lindsay Pendisco?
XL is not the size.
Kristen Williams?
She's right here.
Trying to remember the ones that... Charest?
I'll be sure to take the other ones back.
Amanda Stewart?
Settle them to the table.
Guessing Nike and Paul, did you? Stephanie?
Stephanie's here. She's not here.
Megan Hershey? Right here, Megan? Well, thank you. Hey, Robbie?
No, Nicole's not here. I know her.
Lauren's not here, she's actually twirling tonight.
Not the oldies, you can't just paw through them like that.
Oh, God.
You guys ever, never mind. Heather Johansson?
We had him in order, you know that.
They didn't come up there. Lauren's not here. Justin is not here, she's playing basketball. Megan's here? Yeah. And I think Jamie, is that the only one who didn't get one yet? There we go. I'll take these back afterwards. Well, thank you very much, girls, and if you need to leave to go to the basketball game, or...
Roses are so much easier. The next item we have, you guys ready? Is online student text with Joe Oswald and Karen Robinson, your students. If you guys would like to be recognized, go ahead.
To continue our recognition tonight of students, we have a two-parter on this online student text this evening. The first part is we'll tonight present the world premiere of the online text video that Karen Robinson and her video production students put together for us for Leo 21. And secondly, we'll have a brief demonstration by Joe Oswald on how online student texts work. So without further ado, I'll bring Karen up and some of her students who worked on this production.
Do the lights down a little.
All right. Forgive me, I don't know if I could be picked up here. You can tell that these guys are really anxious to be standing up there before you. So we'll keep it short and sweet. We were asked to put something together about the online textbooks, and I decided to throw it at my first-year students. So this is Lauren Anker, EJ Lee, both are in the first year of vocational video. And we needed some on-camera talent, and so EJ has a neighbor, and his name is Peter Landry, and he volunteered, or was volunteered, to be on-camera for us. And so you're gonna see the premiere, and I think he'd rather be out there right now than in here. But just very briefly, it's a short, it's a two-minute piece. The whole idea was to get the point across, that we do have this service available, and online textbooks could be very useful for a lot of people. And our challenge was to make it a little interesting, because when we first came up with the idea that, well, we're doing a video here, I said, "So guys, what are we gonna do?" They went, "I don't know." So after a little bit of bantering back and forth, and this class does it very, very well, I sort of step aside and let them get into groups, and they talk. They came up with some ideas. They decided we wanted to kind of be a little amusing, but what we were all picturing was, you know, your basic, as they call it, freshman backpack, it's about this big, and the fourth and fifth graders have their own version. You know, you've got your kids about that tall, and the backpack goes out about that wide, and it's filled with all kinds of stuff. And so that's sort of what led us into it. And the "filled with all kinds of stuff" was something we then turned over to Lauren and her friend Chrissy, who went around and found the stuff that filled this backpack. So I think, at this point, I don't know how we start it, but why don't we show the video, and you'll see what we... Are you ready?
Turn the lights down a little.
Hey there, Billy. What's wrong? Oh, you forgot your textbook? That's too bad. Wait, do you have internet access? Oh, you do? Well, ask your parents if you can go online. You can? Perfect. Okay, Billy, it's time to go to the computer. Okay, now that you're on the computer, you need to log on to pearsonsuccessnet.com, and type in your username and password. Your username will vary, depending on what school you go to and what grade you're in, but your password will stay the same. Now that you're logged in, you must simply find your textbook, open the link, read what you need to do, and learn.
Great job.
Thank you, Karen, and students, in recognition for your work, I do have a little certificate. I'd like to hand out... EJ. Thank you very much. Lauren? Thank you. And Peter? Thank you very much. Appreciate your work. Go.
I just wanted to give you a little preview and show you some of the online textbooks. And I wanted to tell you that if you would like to go there, or if you're watching at home and would like to know how to get there, the information is on each of the schools and the district website. And if you go either at the school or here to the district, and go to the document section, and on the district page, you have to scroll down a ways, and it's kind of on the bottom, it says "online textbooks." And there, some information about what's available. And right now, the following classes have their textbooks online. The high school has economics and world history. All of the social studies textbooks at the middle school are online. In fourth and fifth grade, the social studies text is online, and K-5 mathematics, and the reading, which is just in the pilot year. We also have, and those can be found at the pearsonsuccessnet.com site, we also have the Algebra I textbook online, and I believe that's used at the middle school and the high school. So to give you a quick overview, I think I'll start with the algebra text, first of all. And it, I like what it says, it's the textbook, it's online. And... It seems to follow the textbooks pretty closely. Unit 1, and here are all the subcategories. There are some interactive features at the end of each chapter that probably aren't available on the hard copy. And I think maybe just the easiest way to get there is for me to go over here. And beginning of the year, they were probably talking about Order of Operations. This is the page, but if you scroll down a little bit, you'll see some, in this case, it's called Animated Algebra. And this one's talking about Order of Operations. And I don't know if you all remember, but there's certain order to do things, and so you can practice here. And so on. I worked hard on that. So that's what the Algebra I looks like. We'll go now to the pearsonsuccessnet, where most of our things are... Or maybe not. I think the feedback I get from teachers and parents is that there's kind of a wide variety of users. Some parents, I have them say that they use it a lot. I think I hear a lot, especially from the math, because I think they're all concerned that they don't necessarily teach their kids how to do a math problem the way they learned it, or how they do it, and they want to make sure that they're following along. So I'm at a site now that is, I've put numerous things on it, so I can show it to when I'm working with different grade-level teachers. But let's start with the social studies. And we're gonna scroll down and go to the world history text at the high school. Oops, too far. And we'll choose the French Revolution, Chapter 6. And there is some audio that goes with these, that I think certainly keeps with our initiatives of literacy and so on, so we'll listen to this one.
The French Revolution and Napoleon. On July 14, 1789, after a day-long hunting expedition, King Louis XVI of France returned to his palace in Versailles. Hours earlier, armed Parisians had attacked the Bastille. They had cut the chains of the prison drawbridge, crushing a member of the crowd, and poured into the courtyard. Chaos ensued as shots rang out, blood was spattered, and heads were paraded down the street on spikes. When Louis heard the news, he exclaimed, "Then it's a revolt?" "No sire," replied the duke bearing the news. "It's a revolution." The French Revolution had begun. In his classic novel of these times, A Tale of Two Cities, Charles Dickens imagined the fall of the Bastille in this way.
So that's a feature that's probably not found in the hard copy edition. There are also some good links to study guides, and if I remember correctly, it was at the end of this page, on note-taking and concept connectors, and right here, with a click of the mouse, you've got some great things for studying, some graphic organizers, again, this fits in nicely with our literacy efforts. So there's lots of resources here that is at their fingertips. I've also heard a lot of comments from parents regarding, and teachers, when kids are sick, it's been very helpful, that they don't have to necessarily get the textbook. The economics text at the high school is very similar, although I'm not for sure the background is quite, oops, and I just signed out of that, quite as interesting as the French Revolution. Let me sign back in, and we'll get back, sorry. The mathematics text. Let's continue in social studies, I'll just show you the middle schools quickly. And I believe, and I could be wrong, I think this is seventh grade, Africa. And it's very similar, same company. They do have, I noticed, some also audio things, and I believe it's in, see, in the reviewer assessment, where you can take a little online quiz. And it must be in the test preparation. So we could go online and do a little self-assessment. I don't know how you guys are in Africa, but, so you could go, there's, appears to be 10 questions, you fill them out, oh no, they're 20, and score my test, and it tells you how many you got right, and would you like to do it again? So a great resource for reviewing concepts, that type of thing. I'm gonna go home. At the elementary level, the math has a little different, we're gonna go to fourth grade, and it certainly has all the pages of the textbook there. And... Oops. That one didn't work. Try again. Didn't like that. Let's see if we can get... So this is basically what the textbook looks like. They also have some additional resources, and if we go over here to E-Tools, maybe? E-Tools itself are electronic manipulatives that the kids can use to solve problems. And just a quick look at that, this will take a little while to load. And this would just be the counters one, and certainly maybe for younger elementary kids, and... And if I add four yellow squares to four red circles, I'll end up with eight. So good, kind of in-between, not, a little more abstract than the actual manipulatives, but certainly not as abstract as some of the paperwork that they would be doing. Also, in that same place, there are videos that, they have these videos also in VHS or some format, but this sometimes is a nice way for the teacher to preview. There are more practice, which this plays a little game, quiz show light with them on the things they've learned. Here are some more examples. Sometimes they're always looking for some, you know, maybe they've just mastered that concept, and they need some more problems to really get it very well, and so this would be a good place to go. And of course, there are some games. And Chicken Corral is a game about area and perimeter, and so they can play, and... And so here, it's asking me, what is the perimeter, with five feet wide and five feet tall, I don't know if you can see that very well. And gee, I think that would be 20, and so on. And then for the very same thing, and I think this is, I like this one, because it's very visual. And now it's asking, what is the area? And since it's five by five, the area will be 25. And it shows the 25 chicks in the corral. So there's some other games that reinforce concepts. See if I can, won't let me go back here. We'll try this again. And the social studies is also for fourth and fifth grade, those are the books that we have. This is way down here. And, oh gee, we'll go to the Midwest. And here are some before-reading activities. I think this pretty much follows the book pretty well, and... And there are also, on all of these, there are additional resources. Here are handbook guides, reference guides that your fingertips, an atlas, our national anthem, symbols, facts about our 50 states. So that hopefully is convenient for a lot of kids. And lastly, we'll just look quickly at the reading, which is, of course, just being piloted this year. And this is the fifth grade reading book. In most of these, they're also, I'll see if I can find an example of where they would have some vocabulary words. It doesn't look like I'm quite on a page with any words, but here's some traditions. So if I click on traditions, which is probably a word, it says over here, word to know, and I can hear it.
Tradition, noun, custom or belief handed down from generation to generation. According to tradition, Betsy Ross made the first American flag. Noun, plural, traditions.
And most of the sites have that feature where the words, the vocabulary, the words they're working on are highlighted, and just by clicking on them, you can hear their meaning and, and so on. So that's kind of it at a quick glance. Okay, do you have any questions?
If I had 100 chickens, how big would the chicken house perimeter be?
Well, it could be several different perimeters.
I guess the, unlike other computer-aided packages, these are all tied to the textbooks and the curriculum that the students are working with every day. And you know, it sounds like a simple thing to say, but rather than someone going out and buying something off the shelf and spending their money for it, everyone in the district has access to this, and it follows the, follows the class.
That's right.
I have a question.
Dan?
So Joe, where do we go from here?
Oh, wow.
Oh, Mark, what, what is our plan? Are we, do we have a plan to introduce other curricula, more at the high school? This is to be utilized as a learning tool, but is it also to be used to supplant textbooks? What's our overall plan here?
I think, Dan, that's a good question. A number of publishing companies today, as part of the purchase of textbooks, they provide often with the package, these online text resources. Recently, the Curriculum Coordinating Council, Sue Ballard showed us a, kind of a futuristic look of technology called Graduation 2020. And it kind of showed this continuum of using the various tools of technology in education. And, you know, while some of it may not be realistic, there are pieces of it that really, I think, touched the chord among a lot of people that viewed that. I do think as the cost of, of laptop computers continues to go down in price, knowing that, you know, a number of publishers, they're recognizing the future there, that students may at some point be bringing their laptops to school. They can access not only the textbook, but a variety of the features that Joe outlined tonight with these online resources, that it could become much more interactive. So I think as the economics go, you know, the price of those things go down, there, there could be, these things emerge, so.
Thank you. Other questions in the board? Nobody else? Thank you.
Joe, Mark, thank you very much.
And thanks to Karen and her class.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. The next item on the agenda tonight was the core reading presentation. I have a few opening remarks, followed by some concluding remarks after the teachers have an opportunity to speak to members of the board this evening. Since the school board's approval of the Scott Forsman Reading Streets pilot in April 2006, more than 35 dedicated classroom teachers, as well as the district's elementary reading teachers, special education teachers have spent the last 10 months intensively focused on testing and implementing the various features of the Scott Forsman program based on state and national frameworks. These teachers have been our leaders, committing extra hours in planning and preparation, in attending cross-grade level meetings, in trainings with local, regional, and national consultants with Scott Forsman, visiting and researching other schools and their implementation, such places as Chester, Rochester, Bedford, and Duxbury, Massachusetts, as well as presenting both formally and informally at their own schools' grade-level meetings, at staff meetings, at the district curriculum council, and tonight at the school board. Additionally, the support of the elementary administration, library, media, and technology staff cannot go unnoticed. From tracking and taking inventory of all the extensive learning materials this program has to offer, to providing audio equipment to observation and monitoring, the team has worked tirelessly to provide the proper support and resources needed during this pilot year. Here to answer your questions on this year's pilot are the following teachers tonight, and please come on up and, and join me here tonight. We have Martha Miller, grade five at South School, Carmen Reed, grade four at Matthew Thornton, Nicole Martinez, grade three at North School, Sandy Brown, grade two at North School, Maria Markey, grade one, South School, Laura Bruley, grade K at Moose Hill, and Vicki Stickney, a reading teacher at Matthew Thornton. We're, basically, we brought the teachers here this evening to answer any questions, hear their stories about the pilot year, and answer any questions that you have. So I'm going to open it up to the school board to ask any questions you may like.
Just hoping we get some stories first. Can we tell a few stories?
Awesome.
Yeah, no, they're like, yeah. It's a reading thing, right?
Martha, why don't, oh, okay, go ahead.
That'd be great, thanks. Yep, just have to come up to the microphone, everyone. Otherwise, they can't hear at home.
I'm a fourth grade teacher at Matthew Thornton. I have loved teaching the reading program. I was actually on the committee that selected this program. The beginning of the year, like with all the programs, as we implement them, was rather difficult. The kids didn't know the vocabulary words, they didn't know the, the different tech, the different language they were using. Now I see such great growth in my class, even from our, each unit, there's a unit benchmark test that we've done. In the beginning, I had a lot of children who were just barely on level, or were actually a little bit in the strategic intervention. This last benchmark test, my whole class was on grade level or above. So I've seen huge growth in my class. They love it. An example is this week, we're, we're learning about the pink dolphin. My class is so excited because they don't know the pink dolphin, and as we went through it, they were like, Mrs. Reed, there's no such thing as a pink dolphin. And I said, well, this says that it's nonfiction. And they're like, that means that it's true. You're telling me there's a pink dolphin? So they are so excited to read this story tomorrow. All week has been building up to this, and they are so excited to find out that there is a pink dolphin. And Greg, Mr. Warren happened to come into our room, and he was like, you're lying to me, there's no way there's a pink dolphin. So we have the whole thing of the, building up to the pink dolphin, which they'll learn about tomorrow, so.
Hi, I'm Martha Miller. I'm a fifth grade teacher at South School. And as you may know, we, as we began the program, the fifth graders did not have a lot of the preliminary information because they were pretty much from fifth grade placed into this program. So we've had to do a lot of backwork. But this is not a basal program. This is a full-fledged program with grammar, with literacy, with reading, and it's, so it's really a rich program, rich in language. We've been talking about complex sentences, compound sentences, independent clauses, dependent clauses, in fifth grade. We've been talking about past participles, present participles, things that a lot of times we haven't been able on our own to pull together because we really haven't had a program where all of us are teaching the same things. People are teaching prepositional phrases probably right now in all grade levels, or in some form, because it is a spiraling program. And in the beginning, it was difficult, but we are seeing the skills grow and grow and grow, and it's just fantastic to see and just to imagine these fifth graders going into sixth grade with the grammar background, with the comprehension background, as well as the vocabulary background.
I'm Nicole Martinez, a third grade teacher from North School, and I just want to comment on what Martha had, Martha had said. She mentioned the spiraling. And this, today, I taught third graders prepositions and prepositional phrases and the object of a proposition. And when I first thought of teaching certain things to third graders, I looked at them at my co-teachers in my school, and I said, they're not going to get this. There is no way they're going to get this. And because it is a spiraling effect, they get it. I would have never thought that some of these things that they would have gotten, and they're getting it. And like she said, it's spiraling. We did, what was that? Possessives. And again, they just got it. They love the stories. There's a challenge for the children. The first parent conferences, my, my higher-end parent said, how is this challenging my student? My student is a challenge. I take her home, we read fifth grade textbooks, she understands it, how is this helping my child? Well, I sat back and I said, do you want to see the text? And I pulled it out and showed them. And they're not just everyday questions. It's not, what was the girl doing on Tuesday? No, it's, okay, on Tuesday, this is what hap, was happening, what generalization can you make? The parent looked back and said, oh, she is being challenged. And it does, it just doesn't help the challenging, those questions are on level, and they're also in the strategic intervention, which we call the tier three. They're also being challenged, but at the same time, they're getting the same theme, and they're still talking about the pink dolphin in fourth grade, just at an easier level in their independent reading. So it really hits all levels, this program, and it's, it's very fun to teach. It's not the, okay, today we're doing this and, and following the old basals.
Hi, I'm Maria Markey, and I teach first grade at South School. And I have to agree with the other teachers. At the beginning of the year, I was very skeptical, especially with first graders. There were so many components. I didn't think we could fit it all in. I didn't know if the students were up for the challenge. And both my neighboring teacher and I are so pleased with the growth the students have made, all, all of the students, not just the on-level students, but the tier two and tier three students that are receiving additional literacy support. There are so many components that they work with each day. There's an oral language component, phonemic awareness, phonics, grammar component. In first grade, we are doing nouns, verbs, adjectives, and the students have definitely met the challenge. It's been an exciting year, and I look forward to next year when we can get into the program even more and, and become more involved in some of the writing pieces and things that we're just learning at this point.
Hi, Laura Bruley, Moose Hill School. Well, it all begins in kindergarten, and it was an overwhelming program, but we're really, we're in the end of the third unit. We've certainly kind of turned a corner in terms of our comfort level. There's a lot that we really like about the program. The vocabulary is outstanding. These kids are using words. Again, just kind of giving them that, that rich background. And what's neat is that they're, they're really understanding the words, they're carrying them over, again, because the program lends itself to that spiral review. When we learned borough a few units back, that word keeps coming up and up again, and the kids are using it in their everyday conversations. It's been kind of neat. The reading is definitely different than what we're used to in kindergarten. We have traditionally been working with a predictable pattern text. This has been a huge turnaround in that it's more of a decodable text. So the kids have gone from the expectation where they might have learned 15 sight words, our goal now is 40, where more than halfway there, and every child knows every word, which, again, the, the kids are just, they just keep meeting the expectations. I too, when I looked at the program at the beginning of the year, just thought, no way. And yet, each time, they're, they're just hitting it, and, and they're going above and beyond. So that's been really, it's, it's been exciting. But, but it's a lot, and, and we have the, the philosophy in the kindergarten, we're trying to keep it child-friendly, developmentally appropriate. We were very fortunate enough, Mark has arranged a number of field trips for us to go and see how the program's being implemented in other districts. And we were a little concerned, the only thing we saw happening in these other districts was reading. There was nothing else going on during their day. These kids were sitting on the rug for 45 minutes in whole group instruction, then they were going to small groups where they were continuing to do their reading. We didn't see any handwriting, we didn't see any math, we didn't see any social studies, science, no themes. And we're trying to keep all of that and add this, and I think we're doing a really good job of it. It's just kind of a balancing, and, and I think we'll get better.
Hi, my name is Sandy Brown. I'm a second grade classroom teacher at North School. I too agree with everyone. It's a wonderful program. I've really enjoyed it. It was a little overwhelming in the very beginning, but it's gotten much better, much easier to handle for me as a teacher. It's strong in the language component, grammar, phonics. The kids really like the stories. There are different types of stories. There's leveled readers, there's, there's decodable readers, there's the stories in the anthologies. The assessment piece is very good in this program. There's different types of assessment. There's selection tests, there's unit benchmark tests, that give me a really good handle on what each of the kids knows and what I need to do to change my instruction for the next week and the next month. I'm just not given a score, and it just says, you know, they received an 80 on this test. I know exactly what they're weak in, what they're strong in, whether they're good in phonics, if they're good in comprehension, or if they're weaker in the comprehension piece, what exactly are they having a difficult time with? Is it main idea? Is it inferencing questions? Exactly what I need to teach more of or better, and, and what I need to do. So that, I really like that piece of the core program.
Hi, I'm Vicki Stickney, and I work with tier two students, so I work with kids who are having a little difficulty with the program. Couple of wonderful things about the program, and I will tell some stories. One is that a marvelous part of the, the tier two, it's called the sidewalks program, is that it corresponds exactly to what the kids are doing in the classroom. So they're getting a second dose. As everybody's talked about the spiraling, they're getting the skills again. When they read in the classroom about making changes in your life, that's exactly what we're reading about when they work with me. It's always the same topic, it's the same vocabulary we're working on, and it's the same skill base. In fact, the kids commented one day to me, we've already read that. I said, we're going to read a story about a child who moves to a new school. And they went, we already read that. Oh, you read one like it in your classroom, now we're going to read about it in our book. There, as everybody said, their level of, of performance has far exceeded, I think, everybody's expectation. It's amazing what they can do. Oh, one of the kids told me today, he interrupted me to announce that, you know, why I can sound like an I or an E if it's the end of the word, and I, wow, and you're in first grade, you know? I just think it's amazing. And the, the other thing I wanted to share, which I know is, is one of the reasons Nate was particularly interested in getting the series. One of our teachers has just returned from maternity leave, and she has just returned from maternity leave. And she was saying to me that normally, it would have taken her a week to ten days to feel she was up and running with a reading program. But she was able to step right back into the program. And by the next day, she felt perfectly comfortable and was ready to go. So a wonderful advantage to having the program. As I say, we're, we're all very excited with how it's going. And each week, it seems to be getting better. And we're here to answer all your questions.
Now that we had story time, we can ask questions.
Questions from the board?
Sure. Mark, this is, these are definitely directed to you. It sounds like a terrific program that, you know, teachers are getting used to. And it sounds very encouraging. What I'd like to know is, what kind of baseline statistics did we establish prior to starting the program so that we can track progress in those pilot classrooms? I'm going to ask you the same question on the classrooms that don't have the pilot running. How do I know that, I'm, I'm assuming our goal is to show improvement more in the classrooms with the pilot than, than in the non-pilot classrooms?
Well, we have, coming up in April, we do have the Iowa Test of Basic Skills that will be administered to our students at the elementary schools all the way up through high school. We can certainly take a look at the, we will certainly look at that data in relation to those students that are in the pilot classes versus the non-pilot classes. The other piece of data that we do have, and I believe some of our teachers that are piloting this year, they can, they can tell you this. Looking at some of our DIBELS results, I recently looked at some of the work that's going on at Moose Hill School. If you look at the pilot teachers' classes from fall to, to the winter, mid-winter benchmark testing, you'll see some dramatic gains there compared to the non-pilot classes. Those are good as well. I don't want to diminish their, their efforts as, as well. But you do see some nice, nice growth. That was just one, one example.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's what we would expect to see. I mean, if we were maintaining the same levels in either classroom, it would point that it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to, you know, move forward. But you know, those, those are the answers that I'm looking for. So thank you.
I have a few questions that, hopefully they're brief. Is our intent to restructure our literacy benchmarks at some point?
I think that's a good question, Dan. During the lead-up to the core reading pilot, the reading teachers, I can't tell you, we spent probably close to eighteen, twenty months in, in really laying out our benchmarks, our trimester guidelines in reading, language arts, and so forth. I believe we will have to go back and revisit. However, with that, however, with that in mind, I do think with the work that they did, I don't foresee that we're going to have to spend that kind of time. But I'm just speaking for myself. But the reading teachers out here.
Sorry.
Come on up, Vicky.
I think the changes would be more along the lines of, for example, the, the example everybody gave, teaching plural possessives. We might have had it, say, in third grade, third trimester. It might be introduced now in, in second grade, third trimester. I think it would be more moving the skills around. When we, one of the things-
Could I interrupt you there real quick, though? I guess if, if, and maybe I'm wrong, but if we're accelerating this, then it sounds to me like we'll be, and that leads into my next question, we'll be acceler, or we'll be revising our benchmarks as we progress through the classes. And how does this affect the middle school? By the time I get to sixth grade, I would think that that benchmark there would change as well. So I think what we're doing here is going on a more accelerated track. And the benchmarks that we've adopted as a community do need to be addressed because it doesn't sound, and boy, I'm a layman, but it doesn't sound like we're just moving some of the delivery around. It sounds like we're accelerating it, pulling it down lower.
Moving down, yes, you're right.
So the plural example you just used is being taught quicker.
Earlier, yes.
So I would think that we have to go back and, at least for a board's perspective, what is our overall intent with the benchmarks at some point? Accelerate everybody to learn to read earlier, better, more definitively? I don't know. It's just, so-
We will definitely have to go back and, and look at the benchmarks.
And I think too, Dan, that if we go with the concept that, at the primary level and even to a certain degree into the intermediate level, depending on the youngsters, we're teaching kids to learn to read, that I think the advantage that we'll begin to see at the middle school level and, and at the high school level is with a strong grounding in a comprehensive kind of program, their ability to read, to learn, I think will be increased. And I think that's going to have a very positive spillover effect in social studies, science, mathematics, the whole nine yards. And I think that's important. The other thing too, just to add something in, one of the things that I think, what I'm hearing, that people are liking from the program is its comprehensive nature, the fact that we can work with level-two youngsters with this program and also use additional supplementary stuff, which we heard from some of our special education staff today, to, to balance things out so that we don't lose the multiplicity of tools to use, but we're working with a core program that ties things in. As far as English is concerned, you know, language arts plus the reading. And I think that's a significant advantage to our students. And the fact that we're using a common language and common vocabulary, I think, is also very supportive of it.
So we'll, time will tell, but it will have some impact certainly on our reading programs as they exist at the middle schools.
Yes, sir. I, I think, I think the best, one of the, one of the keys that you can use is something that we've done recently. With the adjustments that Andy has made in math at the middle school, has, we've adjusted the programs there and the sequence of math. I think we'll, we'll continue to see that in language arts and reading up and down the line. And so it's one of those really good things, I think.
Sure. Can you continue, Steve?
Please.
Those of you piloting the program, you've all said that when you first saw it, you said, "Gee whiz," or whatever your exclam, or exclamation points were. If we adopt this, and it sounds like we're probably going to, what would you, how would it ease of transition from your own experiences to the other classroom teachers next year? How does that work? So they don't, it's an introduction to them as well next year, and they say, "Boy, what do I do?" I guess I'm trying, you know, you all said that when you first saw it, you said, "Boy, how's this going to work?"
Right. Mark has already got things in place for the pilot teachers to meet with the grade-level teachers so that they can discuss what, you know, where to start, what are the easiest ways to get into the program, to build up their comfort level. We've been delighted in our building. I know people have come to me to borrow teachers' editions. They wanted to see that. Our teachers have started visiting the website to get comfortable with that. And we've suggested that they start going in to observe in the classrooms of the pilot teachers to see how the program works. And then related to the actual materials, we've suggested that they go in to see just how much materials there are so that they can plan on how they're going to set up their classroom and how they're going to store everything.
So they'll have some comfort level when they walk into the classroom at the beginning?
Right. Mark's intention is, is that they'll meet next month, and then you're going to have them meet in June.
Actually, the questions that you're asking, Dan, if you don't mind, I'll just read you some of the, kind of, kind of the questions that you're asking is, "Where do we go next?" kind of questions that I think maybe-
I'm sure you have it covered.
Let me, let me just kind of outline some of those pieces just for the board and, and public at home. Basically, in the next several months before the year is, is out, we are looking at that all, all teachers K through five would receive the Scott Forsman Reading Streets, the 2008 editions, prior to the close of the school year. For the current piloting teachers, the 2007 materials will be replaced by Scott Forsman with the 2008 materials at no cost. Secondly, we're planning on having our pilot teachers, our reading teachers, to meet with the grade-level teachers in school, in the schools, to provide sessions with them on the program during the March 28th early release day. The district is also, we're also looking at providing a parent information session with Scott Forsman consultants and several of the pilot reading teachers this spring that has not yet been announced. But we're looking at putting that in place. We're also, we'll have training provided by the Scott Forsman Company to all of our K-5 teachers on the June Teacher Workshop Day. That's a three-hour session. Also, on that same day, we are planning to have the pilot teachers and the reading teachers to work with grade-level teachers in the planning and preparation of the first unit on the June Teacher Workshop Day. So that'll allow for a smooth transition as we start into the school year in the fall. We're also looking at arranging additional training and work sessions with the staff next year, as well as some of the things you pointed out, some curriculum work time during the next school year. And those details will be mapped out in the months ahead.
I guess I got some real quick questions. I don't mean to monopolize this.
No, it's okay, Dan.
Somebody said that some of the other districts, that the children were spending most of their time just reading. What do we see at the lower-level grades, kindergarten, first grade, second grade? Have we increased the amount of time they're going to be in this program and taken away from some of the social intervention or some of the other things that for a long time we thought are also necessary for development? I don't think anybody wants to get to, "We just read," but how much time are we spending on this additional that we have not been in the pen?
I spend a similar amount of time on the program. But what I like is that there are different components. So we meet together in the morning as a whole group, so they get the whole group situation. They work in small reading groups guided by the teacher. They also have time for independent work. So it just, it's formatted a little different, but I'm still spending the same amount of time. I haven't taken away from any subjects.
Okay.
At the kindergarten level, I guess the big difference for me this year is I am doing a small reading group three days a week. They're actually getting reading five days a week. Last year, they were probably getting it two, three times a week. So where the trade-off has been, has been rather than do small group math instruction, I have turned that over to an assistant to do, and we'll do math more often whole group. So it is, you're just kind of trading things. But I know our priority this year is, is the reading, is the literacy. And, you know, I see tremendous gains in the kids. So it's just in terms of turning things around. But there's not, you know, every minute in the kindergarten classroom, we're, we're moving and we're grooving. I mean, there's a lot to get done in the day because we haven't been able to give anything up. We've just kind of keep adding some more pieces to it. So that's kind of where we're trying to feel our way, trying to keep it. We want to keep the kids moving. We, of course, that social piece is just huge. When we meet with the parents, that's their question. They, they don't ask about the DIBELS tests, I'm sorry. They want to know if they have friends, if, you know, how they handle conflict. So, you know, it's just trying to kind of keep all those pieces together at the kindergarten level.
Sure. And the last question I have. What don't you like about the program? If you had to change something, or if you'd like to see something different about it? What have we learned that, is it great, everything's great?
No.
Okay.
Well, I think it goes back to your question about, what was the question again? You had a question, no. The question was, you said-
What don't we like about it? Or what's wrong with it? Or what can we change?
No, no, it was wrong with it. It's going back to, oh my goodness. It's overwhelming. And so because of that, what do we see in the future? What do we need to have for the pilot teachers or for the new teachers coming in? If we looked at the math program, we did not, we did not fix everything in one year. It takes us time. So we need time over at least three years for people to figure out their schedules, to figure out how to put other programs into place, how to put all the pieces, the SRA, everything into place. So it really is going to take time for us to be able to figure it out as a team, as a whole district team. And so therefore, I think, my point would be that we need time, at least three years, and down, three years down the road, we'll be like the math program, where we'll know which pieces fit. It's overwhelming. There's audio, text, and background. And the text, it's, you know, it's a full, full program. And for us to say, "What would I choose?" Today, I did fluency reads. And there are different levels on this. There's differentiated learning. So for me to figure out how to put all the pieces of the pie together, it's difficult. It's moving us to a higher level of teaching. And so that's, I think, what, I, it's not that I don't like about it. It's scary. And having, not knowing if we have time to become better professionals at this particular program. That's what I'd like to see.
Well, you just used up everybody's time.
You should have stopped me.
I ran out of questions. He asked all the ones I was going to ask.
I'm thinking furiously of new questions to ask. Some good ones, Dan. Mark, it just seems to me like this has exceeded our expectations in a lot of ways. We were looking for a replacement system. We were looking for something to integrate with what we were doing elsewhere. But so much what I'm hearing is just surprise at how well the students are responding to the challenges in this. And it didn't seem to me like we were necessarily even trying to reach for those fences. And we're reaching those and more.
Just my only comment, Paul, on, on the question, which you, you raised, you, you raised a good comment. I just have to, you know, I've, I've heard the battle stories from a number of the pilot teachers. There's been a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in the piloting of this program. They've come to me, a number of them, you know, "We really want to have the consultants back in. We want to get out to see other programs." And they've, they have pushed me to try to meet their needs in this piloting year. So a lot of the credit goes to, to these leaders behind me and testing it out, seeing what works, what doesn't work with kids. And so all, all the credit goes to our teachers.
I'm sure. As we go forward and build on this, do you think there'll be an opportunity in our literacy statement to express some of the achievements that we've, we're making in this core update?
Absolutely. I can see we, as, as we, as Martha alluded to, as teachers become more familiar with the program, I'm sure that we will find many positives out of this program.
That we can share with the community.
That we can share.
Right. One last thing on kindergarten. Sorry to, to come back to you again. But when we, when the curriculum committee met, we discussed a little bit that one area that was a little more of a challenge than other areas was at the kindergarten level. And I was wondering if you could just elaborate a little bit about, knowing this is a challenge, knowing the kids even at that level are responding, and they're, they're on their toes and moving and making progress. I guess I'm, as I'm understanding it, I'm, I'm seeing this program as an academic program and not, not treating too much the social aspect of development of the kids at that grade level. So I'm wondering if, my impression was that you guys are trying to, in light of what this program demands, find the happy medium to both get the most out of this program, but also to maintain the social development that you and we want with the kids. Is that, is that still a combination you're working on?
That was one of the big issues that we were after, Mark. We wanted to kind of see how they were doing this in other schools. We wanted to talk to the consultants to kind of see how other schools were fitting all these pieces together. One of the concerns that I had was there are four books a week for these children. And four books, doing a different book a day, the children were, were practicing them, but they really weren't, I would say, walking away with the certainty that, "Yeah, I can read this book." So in talking with the consultants, with, talking with other teachers at other districts, and among myself with our colleagues, we've already made a decision that we're going to choose two books, and we're going to learn to read them really well, rather than try to do four just for that practice. We're going to take the kindergarten level reader, which is a book that each child, every child at the kindergarten level would be expected to read, and then the phonics practice- child at the kindergarten level would be expected to read, and then the phonics practice story, which is a second book a week that, again, just ties in all of the phonics and phonemic awareness skills that we work on during the week. So, we're just trying to make choices for the program that'll work for us. Again, at the kindergarten level, we have been, the entire staff has been trained with the lips program, encouraging children, it's another way to kind of feel their letter sounds. We really work on how our lips and our tongues move, and it just gives the child an actual tactile, kinesthetic feel to reading. And we don't want to give that up, because that has been so successful. So, again, we've talked among ourselves, and with, most of the other kindergarten teachers are already very familiar with the program. We've really been kind of, even though Julie and myself are piloting it, everybody's been kind of, been on board to kind of hear our frustrations, to kind of talk things out. And we've made some decisions already for next year. We've already met. We've started working on these things. So, I think we're going to be able to kind of take the best part of the program to keep what we know is already working at the kindergarten, which we were just unwilling to give up. And I think that's why we were giving Mark such a hard time, because we know what was working, we know it was very successful with our kids, and we're just going to try to like blend and just put together the very best program that we can for them.
And the program has the flexibility to allow that?
Yes, it does. It does. If we don't follow it strictly, it is a five-day program, but again, at the kindergarten, it's impossible to follow anything that strictly, just because of the nature of our day, the nature of the children that we deal with. Yesterday was the 100th day of school. The only thing going on yesterday was counting, meeting zero, the hero. You know, we didn't have our reading groups, but we, we had our story of the day, of course. We did our read aloud. We can still pull those different strategies that are a part of the core, talking about sequence, or cause and effect, or character, or setting. It's, I think we all kind of feel that the program, it's a blessing and a curse. It's a blessing. There's so much to choose from. It's just trying to kind of feel our way, and again, you know, getting the time to, that we know, you know, in time, we're going to know what picks and works. It was the same with the, I piloted the math program, and I remember the first year, too, just kind of being a little overwhelmed, doing geometry and time in kindergarten. I'm thinking, oh my goodness, but they get it, and they love it, and they'll throw out those terms, that vocabulary again. And I'm seeing the same thing with the reading. So, I know in time, we'll become much more comfortable with it, but we want to hold on to what we know works. Again, keeping in mind, you know, the heart of the five, six-year-old child. It's that balance.
Thank you. Dan?
One last one. I know we can't control, but we have children coming in from other kindergartens. When they come into first grade and have been exposed to this, is there a learning curve? We haven't seen it, but would you anticipate one to be? Or would that, where tier two would come into place?
I can somewhat respond to that, but perhaps Maria and Vicki could add to it. In the first grade, grade one of the Reading Streets program, there is a supplemental kindergarten, kind of a review component that teachers can access at grade one as one, as, as an example, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually only have one question. The, it's unusual to be approached on projects like this on the street, and I've actually had a few people come to me, parents, and they had indicated that the program's rather aggressive, particularly in the younger ages. And I just was, I've heard that from you when you've all spoken, that particularly in the beginning, it's very, very difficult to get up to speed. Do you think that that has any effects on the, on the children?
Negative effects? I think it just, I think if you bring challenge to anybody, they get better, and you have to offer them that challenge, and that's what we're surprised about, is that they're meeting that challenge. So, I think it's a learning curve for them, for us, but I haven't seen any negative impact. I think, obviously, fifth graders being put into a program right now, it's more difficult for them, but as it spirals, and if they come up from first grade all the way through, it's going to be much more, it's going to be easier for them to manage, and it's also going to make much better learners.
It sounds like you're trying to mitigate some of those effects in kindergarten with dropping the number of books from four to two, and, you know, being aware of that, making sure they get lots of line leader time.
Important.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys. You just want to mention, too, you guys have done an absolutely stellar job this year. Thank you very, very much. It's greatly appreciated, all the extra work. And I know everything hasn't been exactly rosy all the time, but you guys have worked your way through it, and thank you very much. It's greatly appreciated by all of you. Thank you.
We'll have to impilot the science program.
There you go. I want to thank Mark, too. Mark has been stellar through this.
Steve, did you want this back?
Yes, I will. Yeah, I particularly liked the comment about the parents aren't all that interested in DIBELS. See, has them all memorized, so... Are you, are you here for citizenship, Mary Page? What's that?
A different one.
A different one? Want to come up and introduce yourself? Well, I'll tell you what. I'm going to give you a secret. Right up here at the front, on your way out, there's a packet for the press, and there's an extra packet, and that way, you'll get the agenda and a bunch of hard copy on what's going on, so it'll make your report easier. The next item on the agenda is, the superintendent and his designee have left the room. Let's see, who wants to be superintendent tonight? Ah, Sue! Oh, Pat. Oh, Pat, you want to be superintendent?
For the night, sure.
Superintendent designee, Pat Slazak. If there's anything, oh.
I'm glad the secretary wasn't here either.
Oh, yeah, the secretary left, too, Steve.
Yeah. I can take notes.
The, while we're waiting, it's, we have these retirements tonight. You guys know either. Would you like to speak?
Yes.
I thought that would be nice. Paul, do you know Susan?
I know her, too. She had my son.
Okay, see?
You sure you don't want to read?
No, no, I thought it would be nice to have somebody that actually, if I knew them, I'd be more than happy to. So, we have a superintendent, and we have Mary Wing-Soros, and while they're setting up, I'd just like to thank Mary Wing-Soros. I've been trying to sit down and write a letter to the editor, so that everybody knows what she did for us. We had a situation at the NH Cafe meeting, and Mary stepped up to the plate, and once Sue Ballard figured out how to get the equipment open and where the on and off switch was, particularly the off switch, Mary volunteered and ran the cameras for the NH Cafe meeting, which I'll talk about in my liaison reports. While they're setting up, I'd like to have the superintendent just review. What we did was about a month ago, we built a model, and the intent of this model was to address the community and their concern, or their, the few people that have approached us about being concerned with revenue and want, excuse me, with expenses and wanting us to cut the budget. And we had the superintendent look at two and a half million dollars, and we had the superintendent, which would give us a flat budget, taking us back to exactly where we were last year, and the superintendent look at five million dollars and its effect on the school system. And he built that, and just briefly, Nate, would you like to review that for those that didn't get to see that meeting? And then we'll lead into why we have Andre here.
Okay. One of the things that we tried to do was take a look at what an impact would be, a two and a half million dollar reduction, or a five million dollar reduction, as Steve had mentioned. And the model that we developed was a very simple and basic one. We started with the state minimum standards, and obviously, one of the key drivers is staff and staffing costs. So, we went, looked at minimum standards, and just to give you an example, at the elementary level, on the minimum standards K through two, the minimum standards are 25 to one. Grades three through six, three through five, the minimum standards are 30 to one. So, what we did was, we, we then recalculated our classes, so that we met state minimum standards, not where the numbers are, where we are. That was a significant reduction in money. Simultaneously, we also were able to reduce, obviously, if you're reducing the number of classes, you're able to reduce the number of classroom assistants that went along with it. We also, by doing that, we were then able to say, we had, in essence, freed up X number of classrooms, which meant that we could then reduce, we could then either close a school and/or keep all the schools open, and move the sixth grade back into the elementary schools and run an elementary school program as opposed to a middle school program, therefore also reducing the number of staff required, because when you run a middle school program, it's more staff-intensive than running a self-contained program. We also, on top of that, said, all right, we now require 24 credits to graduate from high school. What would happen if, in fact, we reduced that number down to the state minimum standard and also capped the number of credits a student can take? That also resulted in, obviously, staffing decreases. So, we, we looked at that, and more or less, in a way to demonstrate that, one, it would be, obviously, from my perspective, and I think the board's perspective, and I'm sure staff's perspective, a negative impact on the program. But by doing that, I think it also created a situation where we said, not only do you have to look at expenditure side, you also have to look at the revenue side to support the kind of program that we, in fact, want to be able to keep and maintain and allow to stay in place. And I think that brings us to, to where we are this evening, with the idea that when you look at a budget, just as we look at a family budget, you're looking at expenditures, and you're also looking at revenue or income coming in, and where is the balance between the two? And I think as we move ahead, in, not only in Londonderry, but also in the state as a whole, that for individual school districts, the revenue side, I think, is going to become more and more important as we look to maintain, let alone continue to expand or provide additional course offerings and programs and services, particularly in light of, what's a good way of putting this? Increasing number of mandates and requirements given to us by both the federal government and the state government, as well as the federal government's continued shortfall in funding appropriations that they initially said they would fund, but still leaving in place requirements that schools have to fulfill. So, as we move ahead, I think it's, becomes incumbent upon us not only to look at what we're doing and how we're doing in the delivery of educational services, but are there additional options that we can look at as far as revenue generation to allow us to keep that engine running, so to speak? And I think that's, that's where we are.
And I apologize to South School, because I've had several parents come up to me and ask me why I'm closing South School. And we just use that as part of our model, as an example to look at the numbers and what type of effect those, those numbers would have on us. So, since there are two parts to the equation, there's both expense and revenue. I asked Andre, and Andre Garen is the town planner for the town of Londonderry, and I asked him to come speak on just one project, one development area that we can look at for revenue and just find out a little bit more about it. It's been on the shelf for a little while, and I know it came off the shelf when I was working with a customer, and they were, I was actually surprised at some of the things that were in this, in this plan and in this presentation. And by the way, Michael Kresh, our, our student representative, the council's going to be very upset, because he saw the plan, and he wanted to spend a lot of time with this and find out more about it. He's very interested in it.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board. Actually, my name is Andre Garen. Actually, my title is Director of Planning and Economic Development, and actually, the town planner is actually Tim Thompson, my assistant planner. And also, my office is comprised of our GIS manager, John Vogel, and my secretary, Kathy Dursa. Steve wanted me to present to you tonight what took place several years ago, 2003, and that was a Londonderry business design charrette. For those not familiar with the airport area, there is a, a area south of the airport that is currently vacant. And when I was first hired here, seven years ago, Dick Plant, who was the town manager at the time, says, you know, Andre, that is the jewel of, at least the economic jewel of Londonderry. You're really going to nurture it along. So, when Steve says this has been on the shelf, actually, it hasn't. We've been actively working in this area for the last seven years. It's just that, you know, things, one of the things that this area is predicated upon is the airport access road, and that has seen delay after delay. One has been due to the Eagles, and others due to purchasing of mitigation land. So, before, as I start this, I just want to just introduce, you know, what is economic development? And as I attend a lot of the economic development workshops, this, I guess, definition seems to keep on coming up, and it's in kind of an integrated approach, which is, it involves setting forth series of interactive policies, procedures, activities established by the community, too. Obviously, one, improve the economic well-being, quality of life by providing jobs, increase tax, tax base. Improve the community's value through infrastructure improvements, accelerate value of real estate. Now, when, when I look at that, obviously, some people may put a lot of credence to job creation, some don't. Without a job, obviously, you have a difficult time paying your bills and operating your household. Increase in tax base, for a town, you have a tough, without increase your tax base, you have a tough time meeting your demands of the community as it grows, such as roadway improvements, expansion of schools, police, fire, and things of that sort. The value of real estate, obviously, since we're a property tax-based state, obviously, real estate value means a lot to us. If it goes down, obviously, our tax base isn't going to grow. If it accelerates an increase in value, obviously, our tax base grows. So, economic development does have an impact in that. Economic development is not new to Londonderry. I know longtime residents will know that we've seen some growth in economic developments in my seven years here. Before coming to Londonderry, I was the planning director over in town of Goffstown for 11 years. My first month here in Londonderry, I saw more economic development growth than I saw in 11 years in Goffstown. It's this incredible, Londonderry just happens to be in an area that, one, you have available land, available infrastructure, but you're, it's, as real estate agents say all the time, location, location, location. You just happen to be in a very envious location, not only in Southern, in Southern New Hampshire, but in the state. When people look at what we have here, and what we are capable of being in the future, we are the, as far as economic development is concerned, we are the envy of the state. So, we've seen this expansion of Coca-Cola. Matter of fact, that was one of my first projects when I got here, is that they already had a 300,000-square-foot facility off of Sims Drive. They added another 100,000 square feet, you know, when I first got here in 1999, 2000. Now, they're adding another 30,000 to it. Insight Technology had built a state-of-the-art facility in 1999. Matter of fact, Vice President Gore came and, and opened the site with the President Ken Solinsky, and they built a 60,000-square-foot building. Now, they expanded and created a 150,000-square-foot facility in Londonderry. Friezer Warehouse, when I first got here, they had a 40,000-square-foot facility built in 1998. In 1999, they added another 30,000 square foot to it, and now, they just built another 100,000-square-foot facility right on the dairy border near, off of Route 28. Obviously, people know the Home Depot, that's 137,000-square-foot facility. The Elliott Medical Center, which is off of, which is currently being built off of Betchik Road, at full build-out, that's going to be 87,000 square feet. Some might remember the AES facility. I don't know. That might, been erased from a lot of people's minds, but obviously, that is a, a big economic engine. That, the development alone takes up about 10% of our total tax base. Our total tax base is about $3.1 billion. And AES alone represents about 10% of that. Baderis Hydronics, Dunford Springs, all are, are, you know, are developments that occurred over the last seven years. And I put in the Musquash Trail Systems, and some might look at that and say, well, what does this have to do with the picture? That's just an attraction. People like it. The Conservation Commission's done a very good job of expanding that. People from outside come to Londonderry in order to walk the trails, whatever, which would mean that if people from the outside are coming in, that means they're spending money in the community and helping that overall economic development effort. in the community and helping that overall economic development effort. So, same could be, and that's no different from people going to Boston, walking Freedom Trail or whatever. It's the same, on the same level. So, this is the area, and let me disorient you. Obviously, the blue lines up top are the, is the airport runways. That yellow line that says Pettingill Road, that is currently, part of that road is, has been improved to a Class 5 road, which is one that is maintained by the town, but the remainder, as you head towards Manchester, is still a dirt road. And that dirt road is the primary access point to about 735 acres in the immediate area. So, one of the questions that was asked when I first took the job here was, you know, what do people want to see done with this area? And every time I ask that question, I get the same response, and that is, you can almost hear a pin drop, because that area is so vast and there's so many ideals and so many, the potential there is so great that it's hard to really put your arms around. So, that's why we, I had the opportunity back in, a few years back, in 2002, actually, to submit a grant for, to have Plan New Hampshire, which is a group of architects, engineers that look for projects like this to help foster a design charrette, to garner ideals about what you can do with a resource. This is the largest project that they've ever undertaken. Usually, it's a building downtown. It's a Main Street type of program. It's really a small-scale thing. I went to them and said, "How about 1,000 acres?" You know, that was with, so, they did it. Usually, a charrette is usually a one-day or two-day thing type of process. This one was a four-day. It started on Thursday and then on Sunday. And it was, it was four days straight. It was Friday, Saturday, actually, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then in the afternoon. And basically, what we, what we did, we brought together, I guess, a whole lot of people, architects, engineers, real estate agents, economists, land planners, you name it, they were there. The owners of the property, which in the immediate airport area property, there are four property owners there. There's the King family, there's the Nash family, there's the airport, and there's the FAA. Those are the main property owners that own the 735 acres in that area. So, we invited them all to the meeting. But some of the background information is, obviously, the growth of Londonderry over the time and what is projected to be in year 25, 2025. The airport, how's that's grown? That's still one of the fastest-growing airports in the country. And the Airport Access Road. If anybody's been following the Airport Access Road, again, it's kind of been a moving target. It was posted and take place in 2004, then it was moved to 2007. Right now, it's estimated to be complete in 2011. And right now, the, why I'm so optimistic about the 2011 is that they've been holding to that date for the last year and a half, so it's looking, it's looking good. And there was a recent article in the paper on January 24th that says that actually, the project is going to go off of bed, and the contract should be awarded in April to start the bridge work over the Merrimack River. What is the charrette? Again, it's a public design listening session. Again, we brought everybody in. I mean, anybody who wanted to participate participated in this, in order to garner some ideals of what, how best to use this area. And this is what the people say. Again, it's a rare opportunity. Again, rarely will you find 1,000 acres of undeveloped land in New Hampshire, and we just happen to have it here, which is boarded by, potentially boarded by Route 3, Route 28, I-93, and 128. So, you have a lot of access points in there and a major airport boot. Developed with a mixed use, obviously, we didn't want to look at this area and just put one, one big user in there. I grew up in Framingham, Massachusetts, and our big industry there was the GM plant. That was great when it was operational, but when it went down, it really displaced a lot of families, and it was horrible. And I would hate to see, you know, again, you put your eggs in one basket, it's all dependent on that one industry. A lot of the, a lot of the economic development in the South is really tailored to one of those, those big plans, like the Mercedes Plan or the Tarder Plan or whatever. Great when they're great, but when times get tough and they start laying off, it has a catastrophic economic impact on the community. So, mixed uses is something that we wanted to see here. Traffic issues. Obviously, anytime you invite any type of commercial industrial development to an area, obviously, traffic will come. And those are the things that we looked at with this project as well. Stronger connection with Exit 5. Some of you may remember when the Airport Access Road was a project that went from Route 3 all the way to Exit 5. That was something that the town wanted, was considering doing, but opted not to make that connection with Exit 5. It opted to stop in the airport area. But anytime you're looking to attract some industrial and commercial development in this area to the magnitude that we are, and I'll get to that later on in our presentation, is that people are going to want to get there, even though you have a good access point to, a direct access point to Route 3, there are going to be some that are going to want to make their way to Exit 5. So, we took a look at that. Again, the Greenwich Field Road connection, going back to the Airport Access Road when it was proposed to go to Exit 5, there was a variety of routes proposed at one time, and one of those routes, routes kind of took Harvey Road and went north into an area where is, which is owned by, actually, was encumbered by a couple of farms in that area, I think it was, the Merrill Farm in that one area where the route went through. And based on the feedback that we received at that charrette meeting is that they wanted not to pursue those routes and to keep all the traffic and any, any improvements to the roadway system to Greenwich Field Road as it connects on Route 28. And a sensitivity to environmental resources, again, you'll see, as we move on, that we pay particular attention to some of the environmental, a lot of the environmental features in that area. And then the function as a campus, again, to try to mix the uses, mixture of office, retail, manufacturing, and the campus style, so that, a lot of the needs, as far as the people that will work there, will be met, so you don't have to go all over the place to get a sandwich or do some shopping or whatever, that, a lot of that stuff will be there. Instead of market forces, the economists, Dennis Delay, helped us with this, and right now, Londonderry captures about 11% of the jobs in the area. One of the small stories I like to, like to say is that back in 1990, 80% of the Londonderry workforce went out of, went out of Londonderry to go work. Some went other places in New Hampshire, but a lot went to Massachusetts. In 2000, 78% of the workforce went out of, went out of Londonderry, but the majority stayed in New Hampshire, and the remainder went to Massachusetts to work. I was really tickled pink about that 2%. I mean, that's a, that's a step in the right direction. That means that Londonderry and New Hampshire are starting to meet the needs of the, its own residents and less reliance on Massachusetts for jobs. So, again, that 2% is a, is a good step in the right direction. But what they saw in this area, this immediate area, that 735 acres, is the potential of 3.6 million square feet of commercial industrial development. And that is Convention Center. That, and the talks behind the Convention Center kind of pinked and balled, and now it's starting to peak again because, again, the center in New Hampshire where a lot of the events happen is starting to get a little bit small for the type of venues that people like to see. So, we happen to have an area where it's conducive to a convention center, so that's starting to, starting to come back up again. Again, this is some of the design bubble, which is called the design bubbles, is taking a look at the area and, and taking away those scenic views, those environmental features, which all, all those things in green are those sensitive environmental areas, or seeing views that we wanted to stay away from, and then concentrate our efforts on those bubble areas. Whereas, with the exception of that orange, that big orange area that looks like Texas on below, or a person with a big nose, but that was originally slated for a residence, high residential area, but after discussion, we said that probably wouldn't be conducive to that area, especially the airport. Had a lot of say on that, given that it doesn't want to invite a new constituency to argue against the airport noise. So, we wanted to leave that as it is right now, which is Zone AR1. But the rest, the red area just north of that orange area is the area that we had designated for corporate office. That green area to the right is for manufacturing. That big brown area there is flex tech, it's flexible technical, whether it's R&amp;D or manufacturing, or a combination of both, or office, R&amp;D. We wanted to keep that as a flexible area. That purple area is the village-style retail, and the, that blue area just under the roadway is for a educational facility. If we can attract a expansion of a UNH Manchester, or I kind of think bigger, maybe a Harvard North can go in that area. And then that yellow area at the top is where we identify for the Convention Center. So, that bubble, right, man, turned into this diagram, which we kind of laid out everything. Whereas, the component that really the town is focused on, on doing is to build the main, the trunk line, which, I think this has a laser. The main trunk line, that this right here is Harvey Road, and this is Pettingill Road. This section of Pettingill Road is built, from this area to here has not been built, obviously, because the Airport Access Road hasn't been built. Where focus is our intention of upgrading this roadway from a dirt road to a Class 5 road, limited access road, in order to facilitate this development, we anticipate that this section of the road will be built by developers. And we're still, you know, we're still talking about, you know, the likelihood of that happening. Right now, we still feel that that can be built privately, but this is the main trunk line. And the reason why this is so important is that without this roadway, the DOT wouldn't, the New Hampshire Department of Transportation wouldn't allow us to have that connection. We, they're going to, they want to see how we're going to connect onto this road and what kind of intersection that will entail. We have done and we are continuing to do that work, and so far, we have agreement as to what this intersection is going to look like. Now, we just got to work on what the rest of this is going to look like. So, and that's been on the way for the last several years. And the reason why I say a limited access, what a limited access highway means is that, you know, you try to reduce the number of curb cuts on there. If you ever go down South Willow Street and all the curb cuts that are on there going in and out of the various entities there, one of the things that will eat up most of your capacity is curb cuts, a lot of curb cuts. And so, the way we have this designed is that we want to get people from point A to point B here without having to look around and their head have to be on a swivel, and let the curb cuts be off these side roads here and the roads right up here. And so, that way, we can protect our interests and not have to revisit this road soon after we build it and to expand it or whatever. By keeping a limited access road, I think the capacity will last as well until, beyond 20 years, which is the typical design life of the roadway. And this is the type of road, again, we didn't, we wanted to make this a project that we all can be proud of, and design, and the roadway design plays into that, and we wanted to create a billiard with some trees or vegetation in the middle and not just be your Jersey barrier that you see in a lot of, a lot of industrial developments. Again, now, as you proceed towards, as you proceed towards Route 28, again, we just left this area, and now we're proceeding up. This is Harvey Road, this is Webster Lane right here, and this is Greenwich Field Road as you go towards Route 28. There are some areas where we can, you know, capitalize on some vacant areas that can lead to some, you know, some office warehouse, which, separate from the 3.6 million square feet that we had in the airport area, this would be in addition to that, an additional 280,000 square feet potentially in this area. And also, now we, we're, this is Route 28, this is Page Road right here. What some of the traffic engineers would, would help us take a look at is, you know, how this roadway, which is Page Road, Greenwich Field Road, will probably need to be upgraded, and it could operate as a bypass road, much like the Airport Access Road envisioned. And so, as they looked at what potentially could happen in the airport area and what effect that can happen as people move their way to Exit 5, we came up with this, this area, this potential buildup area. And what, what they envisioned here, so let me, let me just cover that, is a kind of a bypass road here. And what that would do is that will take off a lot of this, a lot of the traffic here will use this. Therefore, we can reduce the speed limit and, and almost make a extension of the village into this area. And that's why you see a commons here and a retail type of development here that transitions to a residential development over there. And up north here off of Page Road is kind of a corporate park. What that has transformed into is this. This is a redesign of that Jackson Bridge Road area. This right here is Sims Drive that transitions to Jackson Bridge Road. Right down here is Coca-Cola, the Coca-Cola plant. Right up here is the Harvey Industries, which you can see from the highway if you're traveling south on I-93. That Harvey Industries is under construction. It's a 335,000 square foot facility, and it's, right now, is located at the end of Jackson Bridge Road. This concept-
We're school people. Can you point out North School?
This is North School right here. This is Sanborn Road, which is, the North School's off, was it, intersects with Clark Road? Everybody know where we are. So, what we try to capture in this is that, again, that retail, as you come across Route 28, we capture that retail here with a little common area. One of the things that we, you know, a lot of the feedback that we received back from, from the school board, as well as the town council and various members from the public is, is not go with the amount of residential that we had in this plan. We felt that in this plan, that, you know, this, this mixed use with retail, retail with apartments transitioning to single-family and duplex development over here, that this better suited the direction that the community wanted to go in, which is mostly all, the orange represents office warehouse, the purple represents this office, and the red represents retail. So, this is all commercial industrial with taking out any of the residential. It was left down here because this area is currently Zone R3. So, writing it today, somebody could present a plan to develop that area in accordance with the zone. But the rest of this, what we're looking at is mostly industrial, commercial type of development. At full buildout, this can generate about 1.5 million square feet of, again, retail, commercial, retail and industrial development, office development over here. And, and some of you may have known that last year, about March 30th of last year, we had established this area as a tax increment finance district. And what that is, is that it's a, it's an economic development tool. And New Hampshire in general, you don't have a whole lot of tools. In the Midwest, if you were to talk to an economic developer out there, they'll say that, boy, we can offer incentives, tax breaks, we'll buy the land, we'll, you know, lease it back to, I mean, there's a whole lot of mechanisms that they have at their disposal. We're property tax-dependent, therefore, we can't give away those, the very thing that we need to help our tax base. Therefore, we don't have a whole lot of incentives to offer, other than, well, it's a great place to live, we don't have a sale tax, and we have the available infrastructure and a good quality of life. And, and that's about it. And believe me, I get a lot of calls from all over the country, and one of the first things out of my mouth is, "Well, what do you have for incentives?" I said, "Well, one, it's nice up here. Two, the skiing is great. And in the summer, the water warms up, comes September." But we just don't have a lot of economic incentives to offer, therefore, we're really, but as we match up with other communities, as far as what we can offer and what they save by, by developing in New Hampshire, I think we offer a pretty good product here with regard to location and, and what they're able to get and what they were to save in sales tax and so on and so forth. So, so the tax increment finance district, basically, what you do, if this was a blank sheet of paper, a blank sheet of land, and right now, we get $100 from that land, that $100 will continue to flow to the general fund. Now, in order to build this road, and, oh, I just turned it off. Sorry about that. Now, how do I get it back on? Okay, thank you. In order to build this road, say this road costs $1,000 to build, and we bond that road, and that the bond payments of that $1,000 is $50, or I should say, say $200. So, if we bond that road for $200, and, and we're relying on the improvements of the area in order to pay for that bond, basically, when Harvey Industries comes in and it gives us $300- and it gives us three hundred dollars in tax revenue, a hundred dollars of that will continue to go to the general fund. The two hundred dollars that we captured in new tax revenue can go out and go to pay that two hundred dollar debt that we have to build that road and the infrastructure needed to support that. That's how a tax increment finance district works. It really relies on the improvement within the area to pay the debt as opposed to coming to you as a resident and saying, could you bond this road? And we'll raise the taxes to cover the bond payments and whatever revenue that we get out of there, we get. This one says, I'm not going to come to you and, and, and have you raise your taxes. I'm going to rely on the improvements within this area to pay for those, for that bond payment. What you're banking against is that what you're giving up is the immediate tax revenue. That's what you're giving up. At the end of the day, if this all develops the way we, we want to, then whatever tax revenue that we generate to cover the bond goes to pay the bond. But wherever excess is generated, not needed to cover the bond can go to the general fund. Once the bond is paid off, all goes to the general fund. So that's how that, that's one mechanism works. And that's one of the mechanisms that we're looking at. Again, we don't have a whole, whole lot of tools in our toolkit, but this is this one. When looking at this total plan back in 2003, we looked at the various components of it. Obviously, the access road, which is the main road from Harvey to the new access road, what the estimated cost that would be. And, and again, these were estimates given by the traffic engineers at the time, which was 3.7 million dollars. Right now, we have an engineer looking at then actually doing the engineering and, and creating the roadway design and what it's going to take to connect that road to the access road. And so we'll have a revised number coming up hopefully on, in mid this year. But also they estimated if we were to construct a road from Harvey Road to Route 28, what that would be, the improvement of Greenwich Field Road. And if we were to upgrade the Route 28, which, which in my feeling would be more of a DOT type of project, because I, I just, I just don't see Londonderry improving Route 28 other than if we have to, if, you know, like the intersection of Page Road and 128 needs to be improved and put a light there in order to make sure some of the development that we want happens, I guess that that would be a, you know, an agreement that we reach with the developer in order to do that. But the upgrade of Route 28 to make it from a two lane to a five lane section all the way down through exit five, I just don't, I just don't see that happening anytime soon. But, but it's something that we'll need to talk with DOT in the, in the short, in the, in the near future, because when I-93 is expanded, obviously that's going to be some repercussions to Londonderry when that happens as well. So that project is on the horizon, isn't really part of this project right now, but we wanted to identify it as a potential for something that we'll work with DOT on. And again, the sources to fund these things, again, general fund, tax increment finance, finance district, special assessment district, which operates much like a tax increment finance district, any state funding out there in form of grants or whatever, and any federal money out there in the form of grants. And so far, he said, how to start? Again, we've been meeting with the, we've been meeting of, we're meeting with the owners of their property in the immediate airport area since 2000. And we continue to meet them and update, update on what's going on. So nothing that comes up in the future would be a surprise. And plus, we need land from these landowners in order to build the road that we want. Therefore, so far they're on board. They realize that, they're no dummies. They realize that once the road's improved, obviously the increased value of their land is going to be pretty good. Promoting the plan, I've been all over the place with this particular presentation to the economic development groups that I belong to as well as other town and communities that are just interested in how Londonderry came about and did this. So I'm in the zoning ordinance, what we'll have before the town in the near future is called a flexible industrial district. And basically what we did is, is try to create a, I would try to create a zoning ordinance around the vision that was created in this document, the vision for that, that area that I showed you earlier. And, and I think we, we have something that we, we, we have to work with. I think we have a pretty good document in which to work with in order to bring that about. And the tax increment, tax increment finance district over the next year, you'll be hearing a lot about that. And, and if that proves to be the best mechanism in order to fund the improvement of the Pettingill Road, then that's what we'll be back to you with. And we're designing and designing the new Pettingill Road and, and if the state stays with its plan, we'll build it come 2000, prior to 2011. And, and the rest, development incentives and plan revise and improve the plan, we're continuing to always tweak the plan and to make it the best possible. So that's what we have. That's the airport area design chart.
For those of you that are passing through the channels and wondering why in the world are we covering a town issue on Leo? And this is a school board meeting. The, and I think I may have made it in, made it clear in some of my statements where I didn't have Andre's position right. I put somebody else in, in that position and there's some other facts that I'm asked up on. And I, what I'm looking for here is to build a relationship with the Economic Planning and Development Group. The school board manages the largest business in Londonderry as far as employees, as far as products, 5,600 students pass through the doors each and every day. And I think that the school board should be a major player in it, not just because we're the largest business, but also because we have, we have a big stake in this. And besides, if we're here, I think that we should stand up to the fact that we should be leaders and we should help lead the community. And as far as I'm concerned, the right path is appropriate commercial and industrial development. There's many people that are afraid to, to touch the third rail here in Londonderry because of some pain that, that occurred in the process. You heard Andre on it with AES. Well, AES is now Granite Ridge Energy. And Granite Ridge Energy pays well over $4 million to the town. It works out, I calculated it out once, it works out to seven dollars a minute. Seven dollars a minute in taxes they pay for every minute of every day, the entire year long, even while we're sleeping and even while we're in these meetings, seven dollars a minute. And with 30 or so employees that go there, that ain't bad. And what we need to do is we need to help Andre. And Andre, will all of this happen tomorrow? I mean, are we talking two years or five years or 10 years or 15 years or 30 years?
Right now, we're, we're talking probably about 15 to 25 years. I mean, you figure over the next four years, the airport access road will be built. While that, towards the end of that construction period, you'll probably have more, a lot of interest obviously in this area. Again, I kid you not, I get inquiries about this area monthly about, you know, and, and a lot of people, matter of fact, if some of you remember the associated groceries project that went up to Pembroke, that was slated to go here. They just, they were that close to getting a deal with the property owner, but the property owner just wouldn't, wouldn't bend on some of the rules there. So they ended up going to Pembroke, but that's a million square feet. Ultimately, it's going to be a million square feet. I think they ended up building 350 now. But those are the, those are the type of entities that are interested. It's such a vast area and 738, five acres is a lot of area for a big corporate office or a big manufacturer to come into. So, but we also have to be conscious of the fact that there's a particular vision that we want to create and therefore we don't want to put, I mean, a million square feet sound great, but how does that fit with the overall plan? And that's one, that's going to be the toughest thing for Londonderry in the, in the, in the near future to deal with is that, boy, we're going to be really tempted to say yes to that one big plant that can do everything, but boy, if we can diversify that as much we can, I think we're going to be better off in the future.
Now, revenue expectations from this thousand acre, thousand acres of, of developable land. I've heard everything from a million dollars in taxes to Peter Lowett, I think, used to use a $25 million in taxes. And if he was talking in those days' numbers, that's probably 35 or a million dollars today. What do you think, because you've talked about some terms that I think a lot of us aren't familiar with, square footage. You talked about the tax base, but, but what could we be talking about as far as revenue?
Yeah, actually, in utilizing the, we had, we had put together a tax increment finance plan for the Jackson Bridge Road area, which the, the assessing department helped us with creating some factors that we could for the various uses, like, let me just make sure I just get this right. One of the factors used in the, in the Jackson Bridge Road area is for office space, a value of $80 per square foot. For manufacturing, $57 for a square, per square foot. Warehousing, $55 per square foot. And retail, a hundred dollars per square foot. And convention center, a hundred and 20 dollars per square foot. And that may not make sense right now, but when you're based on $80 per square foot based on a, you know, potential million square foot facility, that translates to $80 million in assessment and about 1.4 million dollars in taxes. So at full buildout for the airport area, if we use the 3.6 million square feet, using the factors that we used in the Jackson Bridge Road area, we're looking at about 5.2 million square, 5.2 million dollars in tax revenue at full buildout. And that's based on today's tax rate.
And, and that's the area near the airfield and doesn't include the area over towards Route 93?
That's right. This is only the, the, in Jackson Bridge Road area, that TIF district, again, seeks to, based on the same value per square foot, estimated to generate about 1.8 million square, eight million dollars worth of tax revenue. Between the two, you're looking at about $7 million in tax revenue at full buildout.
And on that revenue, Nate, the cost of a child in Lunder School District is now $8,300?
Yes.
And how many children did we bring into this project?
As proposed in the airport area, zero.
So we have no, no school expense the way that we're developing this out?
Correct.
And we have all of that revenue. Now, obviously you have to pay for fire trucks, fire stations, police cars, roadways, clearing the roadways and that, but, so it's not a free ride. But you're talking about tax positive development.
And as Nate mentioned earlier about, you know, you have your, you have your expense and you have your revenue, what we're looking to do is, is invest that revenue in something that's going, you, you should expect a return on. And this is something you should expect a return on. Invest in the roadway, which is going to increase the value of the areas around it and therefore our development, which in turn gets the tax revenue that we're looking for and the job creation. This is estimated a full buildout to generate between 5,000 and 5,000 and 7,000 new jobs.
Questions from the board? Andre, again, I, I think what we're saying is, is we'd like to be behind you if you need any assistance. We know that when people come to town with their children to buy a house, they, they interview the, the school district and find out what it's like here. So if there's anyone that needs to talk to us to feel more comfortable about moving their businesses here, companies here, if there's anything we can do to assist you, both in the school district and then personally, we'd be more than happy to do it. Over the last, one of the things that sparked this is over the last six months, I've been doing research and creating a website on Coho Spring Water. We rolled it out this week at Coho's.com. And the interesting thing was it, they continually, it pops up, the thousand acre park is what they called it. And it was used for, the energy of the day was used, which was to power the flour mills from the river, from the, from the streams. The natural resources, renewable natural resources were used. The wood was harvested and, and cut at the Anis Wood, Wood Mill. It's, in my opinion, this was 100 years ago. In my opinion, it's time again to continue on our path that we're on and appropriately develop this area. So we'd be happy to help you in any way we can.
And one of the big things.
As long as you don't build any houses up there. I think we've been pretty clear on that.
Yeah. I mean, and that's going to be the, it's going to be one of the areas we'll have some serious discussion on because workforce, obviously we can design everything we want to. I mean, we can put down on paper that we want 3.6 million square feet with a development area, but if we have no workers, then, then it's not going to happen. And so that's, that's something that, you know, obviously we, we have to really be concerned about, because one of the biggest drop in the, in our demographic has been the 25 to 35 year olds. And since I've been a planner in New Hampshire for 20 years, I just know that, you know, even in Goffstown, when the new development occurs, there's usually an outcry as to, boy, there's going to be a lot of people coming in there. And therefore those five to 15 year olds were, sort of the unwelcome map has been, has been put out there. But now these five to 15 year olds and now our 25 to 35 year olds, and, and they're leaving New Hampshire by the droves. And, and if you look at some of the forecasts as to that age group in New Hampshire, there's a deficit. And those are our workers. Therefore, you know, that's something that, again, we need to have a serious discussion on, because without a workers, they're going to, business is going to go where the workers
Thank you.
Thank you, Andre.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda.
Second?
First by Dan and second by Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Steve, you, or yeah, no, just aye. Before we end that, we have a couple of people on here and Dan has a personal relationship with him. He's going to talk about two people that are retiring.
Well, years ago, my two boys graduated from South School, so I know both these individuals fairly well. And one thing that should be said is a number of our teachers live in our community and raise their children here. So my children certainly know these two individuals' children as well, or at least my boys do. Pam Flynn and Sue Teslas. So I have a quick thing to read about each of them. And both of them been in our district over 25 years. Pam Flynn first. Pam Flynn has been employed by the Londonderry School District since 1981 in quite a variety of positions ranging from part-time to full-time teaching assignments. Special education coordinator as well as program director at both South and North Elementary Schools. If I'm not mistaken, Pam retired once and then came back as the North School Coordinator, if I'm not mistaken. So maybe we'll see her again, I'm not sure. Before coming to Londonderry, she also taught six years in Manchester in the special education field. She earned her bachelor's degree from Boston College in 1974. I'm not sure why we put the ages in here, but. And a master's degree in special ed from Leslie College in 1979. Pam has been repeatedly described as having the creative ability to maximize her resources. She worked very hard to integrate the special ed personnel into a solid team unit and has earned respect from her colleagues around the state as well within the community of Londonderry. Pam has been an extremely creative and insightful administrator who has passionately serviced the students of Londonderry with complete professionalism and with many years of loyal services. Best wishes to Pam as she looks forward to retirement. There was one other note that wasn't written here, but she's been working with special ed children since she was 12 years old as a camp counselor. So, you know, sometimes your early childhood does dictate what you'll do in later in life. So good luck to Pam. Sue Teslas, she actually taught one of my children at South School. I think she might have had both my boys, but I can't remember. Sue has been teaching fourth grade at South Elementary School for 27 years since 1980. She earned her undergraduate degree in elementary education from Plymouth State College in 1968 and a master's degree in education from Fitchburg State in 1985. Sue's been described as proficient, distinguished in all areas of content knowledge and often has taken a leadership role amongst her colleagues. She has always been a fierce advocate for her students and is passionate about meeting all their needs. Sue's worked very hard to maintain the integrity of the fourth grade Londonderry tour. She's also spent many years raising her family in Londonderry. She's spending February vacation traveling to Honduras with a mission team to help the poor. She is using her trip to teach her class about the country and the people as well as the power, power of volunteerism. She involved the student council and the whole student body in collecting everyday articles for the Honduran people. It's always been one of her dreams to do humanitarian work. We wish Sue many exciting years in retirement. We wish Sue many exciting years in retirement. I think both these individuals, we sit here each, and the board can say, we sit here each in every board meeting, it seems like, and we lose great people, and I think Paul made an eloquent speech tonight about the administration, but it goes down to all our staff in Londonderry, and I think it says something that these individuals want to work here, live here, and our students have been enriched by their lives, so, thank you, Pam and Sue. If anybody has anything to add, but, that was great.
The meetings coming up will be March thirteenth, two thousand and seven, from seven in the morning till eight at night. Oh, that's voting day, so. The, don't forget, it's not on the list here, also, you would need to come out that Saturday, or a hundred of your closest friends or people you don't even know will be spending thirty-five million dollars of your money on the town side. The, March twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven, at seven o'clock, here in the town offices, the school board reorganization meeting. And this evening, we have, Michael is, was unable to attend, and called in, so we'll go straight to Mrs. Slouzak.
Hi. You didn't vote.
Yeah, we did.
We did vote.
No, you first and second, but you didn't.
We did vote, because remember I said aye, Steve Young, and I messed that up? So it was a four, zero.
We're going to do it again.
I did vote. We're going to vote again?
I thought we did.
Yeah, Paul wants to vote again, he doesn't have too many more votes. All in favor?
Aye.
See, that's the time I didn't say aye, Steve Young, so I didn't mess it up. So four, zero. And the motion was by Dan, and the second was by Paul. Yeah, okay.
All set?
We are now.
Okay. South School students have been enjoying experiences with their artist-in-residence Jeff Warner. He's a musician who helps kids see the fascinating history behind folk instruments and the music that they produce. He's visited forty-nine states to listen to songs and gets his best music from the song that kids sing when they're playing games. He's given assemblies for the entire school, but he's focused most of instruction with the fourth grade. From the middle school, the thunderstorms, excuse me, will be performing their African drumming on Thursday to complete their artist-in-residence program. This is the second team to participate in this program, and by the looks and sounds of all the students, it's been a huge success. The eighth grade just completed the NAEP testing on Friday. LMS received a note from the government complimenting, complimenting their staff and students for their cooperation and thoroughness and following through with all the requirements. This was a huge task, as two-hundred-and-seventy-nine of their four-hundred-and-twenty-plus students were randomly selected to be tested, and the school had to not only arrange accommodations for them, but also still work to educate the one-hundred-or-so students that were not chosen. This past week, as a follow-up to the Respect Week speaker for the sixth grade, Ms. New Hampshire, Guidance had another inspirational speaker come in to address the seventh grade on goal-setting and decision-making. Emery Smith is from a national lecture program and spoke with the teams for forty-five minutes and was an inspiration to all. The special curriculum department just completed the annual spelling bee at the middle school. Harry Cho, a sixth grader, was the winner. On March seventeenth, he will advance to the Derry-Salem Regional Spelling Bee, and if he advances past that round, he'll go on to the state. He correctly spelled colloquy and commensurate to win the final round. At Matthew Thornton, they held their spelling bee for fourth and fifth grade students last week. This year's winner is fifth grade, fifth grader Andrew Vivian, and runner-up is Chris Livernoy, also a fifth grade student. At Moose Hill School, to celebrate their one-hundredth day, they had a goal of trying to collect over one-hundred items per classroom to be donated. The goal was exceeded by the nine classes, with over nine-hundred items donated to the St. Jude Food Pantry. So that, that's a wonderful community service project, again, from, from Moose Hill. The computation tests for the elementary grade levels are being held last week and this week, they're the Scantron tests, and Mr. Margolin, on behalf of the staff, I'd like to thank you for your service to the students of Londonderry. I know that over the past three years, you've always had the students' interests foremost in your mind when you've made your decisions and asked your questions, and, and we appreciate that, so thank you and we wish you the best.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. That's it.
George?
Thank you. Planning board meeting, two weeks ago, last week it got snowed out, which was what, February fourteenth, I guess? That whole board has pretty much been focused recently on elderly housing and the change in the ordinance, which I guess got approved Monday night. The one point that I did make is, the closer I get to fifty-five, the less I like the term elderly housing being for fifty-five and over. So I think we've got to focus on change in that name in a hurry. I also got my dose of culture this weekend, I was able to attend both the middle school play Dear Edwina on Friday evening, and the high school play The Pajama Game on Saturday evening, and as always, those kids do a great job, so you should, all you guys, principals, should take that back to your students. They actually do a fantastic job. The communication committee met Monday, yesterday, yesterday's Monday? You start losing it, maybe that fifty-five and over thing is kicking in, I don't know. Couple of things that are going on is, we'll be updating the school profile sheets come after the, after the election. We're also going to try to get a sample ballot, or we will get a sample ballot posted online. Exciting thing is WLOLEO one-oh-three, which is the student radio station, there's going to be some more student voices on the air, as well as, some of the seniors will be creating some programming for that station, which is a great use of that resource. And Sue, did I miss anything? Oh, we're going to try to get the school board meeting minutes out online, that, a couple of residents had asked me about that recently, so in addition to the agenda, we'll get the minutes out once they've been approved. So I would imagine the ones we've approved this evening will be out there before too long, so people can take a look at it. And that would be it, sir.
Paul?
Just extra quick other things, I enjoyed the pajama game also last weekend and the education summit.
Platform committee met, we're still discussing, for those of you who remember, that's looking at a dual platform versus singular platform, and the next meeting's March fifth, and I ask, I'll be out of town, so I asked Ron to attend for me, he'll be able to make that. The present state, presentation to the board is still slated for early May. LEAP PTA, you may remember, a group called The Moms came to us there, the outfit that's complete volunteers, that's looking to build a playground over on the, where the existing playground is now at the recreational fields. The LEAP PTA and kindergarten PTA donated a thousand dollars to that, so that was one of the first PTAs, if I'm not mistaken, to do so. Town Council, George and I went to a town council meeting the day before deliberative session, and it was basically all budget, and the town council meeting last night, it was my wife's birthday, I won't tell you when she graduated from college, but I had a choice town council for my wife's birthday celebration, and I wanted to be married another year onto my twenty-eighth, so I didn't go to town council meeting, so, there I am, so. I have all these personal conflicts with town council meeting, I don't get it, but anyhow, I did catch some of it on television when I came home, and you're right, George, they did approve the elderly ordinance. That's it for me.
The debates with the candidates this weekend was, was interesting, and there were comments by some citizens, and we actually had two or three citizens that you don't normally see came to the debates, and that was rather nice, and there were several comments. One, one that caught my attention quite, quite swiftly, a woman who just moved to town recently does watch all of these shows, and she came here for the school district and for her children, and she was very disappointed that the incumbent was not running, and her point was that she's just that pleased with the school district, so I think that was a good, good compliment to not only Paul, but the rest of the board members and the entire staff. The other meetings I attended, the communications meeting, just one other item that didn't come up in George's conversation, Tom Frieda had brought up in a concept, an idea, that we would do electronic book bags, so that instead of giving people copies, the students' copies to take stuff home, we could save a lot of money if we, if we did it electronically and put together a pilot program. While there are some reasons for why we might not look at that right now, it did spark an idea, and the idea is, is to reduce the amount of paper for the staff, so to look at electronic briefcases, so to speak, for the staff members. Andy's done a good job of starting this at the middle school and requiring that, people must use their email to get the information, and we'll be looking at initiatives in the communications group to help people get information electronically versus making a hard copy of it and carrying that around.
Rich got a little pale there, a second.
Actually, yeah, it was something about a pilot program with Rich, and there was several conversations of staff members in there from North School that explained they would be there to help.
Get rid of that coughing.
Yeah.
You left your two people there, don't you?
The, and speaking of learning new things, in the special education committee meeting this evening, there was a comprehensive presentation given about different techniques for the students and how they learn, and, and once again, I'm just such a newbie at that, and it, it's fascinating to, to see that. We came out and with a decision to get that on to Leo and to broadcast it, working with John Conley, and also that would produce a CD, or excuse me, a DVD that the, could be used to give parents who maybe didn't get a chance to understand the system, so they could take that home and, and get an idea of what, what their students would be going through. The NH Cafe, as Paul mentioned, we had the summit last week, the DVDs should be available within the next few days. Again, I thanked Mary Wing Soares for her assistance on that, without her, we would have been in a, in a pickle, and we were able to tape that with the assistance of Drew over at the cable studio, he helped out and stayed late on that. We saw three presenters, which were very, very different, not only in their presentation styles, but in the programs that they're offering, and I think that that, it was, it was interesting, it wasn't the usual talking head that, that you would expect. We had about thirty, thirty-five people that attended, but I will tell you, the thirty, thirty-five people that attended were very high-level, very interested in, in looking for solutions to school funding. The governor announced his budget this week, and that is, his budget, and still needs to go through the legislator, legislative body, we need to make sure that we're contacting our legislators, and when I say we, I mean everyone in the community of Londonderry, even the children, it wouldn't be, wouldn't hurt to have them writing letters to these legislators, to let them know how important adequate education is. In our opinion, the court has said that they need to define an adequate education, they need to cost out an adequate education, they need to find the funding for an adequate education, and they need to hold themselves accountable for doing that, and that deadline is only about a hundred-and-twenty or so days away. The governor announced a five percent increase, you know, before Superintendent Greenberg spends that money, he already knows this, before the community says, but you're getting an extra five percent, so our taxes will go down, let me explain how that works. The five percent increase that he proposed is a five percent increase to the total amount of money. It doesn't mean that we will get five percent more, as a matter of fact, I'm going to read off a sad set of communities nearby, and us, and how this new budget, and when is the five percent increase a cut? The city of Nashua will have a hit of about nine million dollars. Hudson will lose about four-point-six million dollars, Merrimack, two-point-three million dollars, my friends over there in Marsh Chaffrey, the superintendent of the year. Litchfield will lose three million, Milford, a million-six, Londonderry, four-point-six million, and Brookline, two million. This is reported by someone I consider to be the dean of school funding, Kevin Langergan, in the, in the Nashua Telegraph. And all of this article and other articles can be seen at nhcafe.org, if you'd like to read them for yourselves, and it has links to the articles on that. We'll be spending time over the next few months trying to convince the legislators that they need to act, and they need to act now. And you notice I didn't print that out and bring it with me, I actually used the computer for a change, so Zach, it's possible, it can be done. Nate, you have one liaison report, I understand that you went to the roadshow that occurred in Nashua?
Yes.
And you could tell us a little bit about that?
Members of the community who may not be aware, legislature established a joint task force that is made up of a combination of four senators and four representatives. They're holding five hearings, they held one on, in Nashua, they're holding one tonight in Manchester, there is another one that will be held in Dover, another one in, and another one in Claremont. The purpose of the, this joint legislative task force is to quote-unquote, hear from the citizenry regarding a definition of adequate education. The way the, the meetings are held, there's an overview that is provided, there is a facilitator, people come up and they then say, I believe the definition of inadequate education should include A, B, and C. There is no response from members of the committee, it's just listening to them, notes are taken, and then they will be used later for digestion, if you will, as this joint legislative task force moves towards defining an adequate education. The Nashua meeting is, can be seen on the web, you can go to New Hampshire Close-Up on New Hampshire Public TV. There was a very handsome gentleman that got up and spoke, I thought, very eloquently regarding definition of adequate education, he's getting a little long in the tooth and probably could be in the elderly housing with everybody else, George. But in attempt to make some significant points regarding what comments should, what components should be included in definition of adequate education, there were a number of other citizens that got up and spoke. I think it's very important, if in fact people can either attend these or send an email, if you get on to the general court website, there is a way where you can click, there's a, a new link for adequate education, I believe, and you can click on that and you can send an email with your information. There are, the adequacy stuff revolves around the Claremont decision and also our constitution, and also part of the state statutes defining which, which areas of study, if you will, would be included in a definition of adequacy. So, I would urge members of our community to take a look at the information we have, if anyone is interested. I can make some additional packets, this is the packet of information that was passed out at the, at the joint task force meeting, we can make that, and also provided a document that has been put together by a small group that I'm working with, which is entitled Elements to Consider in Defining a Constitutionally Adequate Education, I believe board members have copies of, of this too. This group is composed of individuals from different groups that represent children and all the Claremont suit, as well as New Hampshire Cafe and so forth. This is still a work in progress, but this in essence is the, the draft that I worked off of, what I made my comments in Nashua that evening. It's something to, to keep a watch on, and I think for members of our community to be vigilant on, as we take a look at what the proposed budget is, the variety of bills that are being pursued in the legislature at this point, from both the senate side and the house side, on defining adequacy and costing it out and so forth. There are some bills in there that just quote-unquote, define adequacy, there's another bill that attempts to define the word cherish, there are some proposed constitutional amendments, there are a variety of other bills that define adequacy and come up with a variety of methods for costing that out and how that would be, and how that money would be distributed, as well as the governor's proposed definition of adequacy. And the, this joint group is winding their way through, and we'll see where they come out, where, where they finally wind up, but their last meeting is March twelfth, which is pretty- But their last meeting is March 12th, which is pretty close to the crossover deadline if memory serves me correct. So it's, from my perspective, this is a significant issue for all of us as we look at it and move ahead and obviously it has significance for us as we look at what schools are being required to do and the revenues that schools are getting and whether or not the state is carrying its fair share of the load in providing resources to enable us to continue with programs, particularly when you look at the myriad of other bills and other requirements that the state is considering and requests that they have, if you want to use that term, or requirements for us to follow. Drop out Bill being one.
Superintendent's report, middle school, high school discipline?
Yes. We'll start with Blake. Why don't we start with you this time and then we'll segue to the high school.
Good evening, everyone. Those of us, George, who are well past 55, I'm happy that you brought that up. We continue to show what I think is fairly exemplary statistics when it comes to discipline at the middle school. Our numbers of in-school types of situations where we're taking students out of the educational environment and putting them into an isolated situation has continued to decrease for the last year and a half, but it's getting, it's becoming more and more dramatic. The in schools, the out of school suspensions, excuse me, this particular quarter went up over last year, but I did mention, we did have, three of those suspensions were attributable to one person who moved in very recently and we are working pretty diligently to try to prevent those issues from occurring again. And of our overall behavioral grouping, 41% of our, our things are directly attributable to seven students, which is fairly amazing and we've always had the feeling that that was the case, but when we actually went down and that started counting one by one, it really is a pretty staggering statistic. And we're working very, very hard. In fact, I was talking to Jay Parent a little while ago about seeing if we can do some extension of what's happening with our program that we're eighth graders going to the high school, spend some time with him over the summer, which has had tremendous success. We're looking to devising a model that will not mirror that, but perhaps head it in the same direction so that we can make a stronger impact on students at a younger age, especially an identified, very definable and fairly small population. I think if we can do something with those kids, I think it'll make a big difference down the road. That's it. I think we're doing a great job. Kids are terrific. Eighth graders are scared to death to lose Washington and the end of the year stuff, so they've been exemplary. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board?
Thank you, Blake. Katie?
As usual, I always bring my sidekicks with me.
Just here for moral support.
At the high school, we just want to say we're extremely proud of our students, especially the ones who came tonight to the meeting. It's not many times throughout the day where we get to hang out with scholar athletes who win the rewards, so we just want to again, extend our gratitude and our congratulations to them. This quarter, our numbers went down again as I reported in the first quarter. Our biggest, our three issues that we were working on this quarter were our safety, kids not attending class, and the disrespectful behavior and I'm happy to report that they have all gone down since last year in second quarter. We are very proud of our students at Londonderry High School. We're close to 1,800 kids and as I was talking to Jim earlier, I think if you walk in our hallways, it's an exciting place to walk. The kids are going from room to room. There's smiles, there's handshakes, they're respecting the teachers. To have that many kids pass throughout the hallway, not have any tension at all is incredible. It's a good place to work. I would say about 89 to 90% of our kids are wonderful. The other 10% keep us very busy throughout the day. Our parents are great to work with. We work very closely with, as we call our frequent flyer kids, who we see maybe on a daily basis and their parents have been very supportive in some of the interventions we've been in place for them. And it's been a nice cold second quarter. Jake?
I would agree. Questions from the board?
Articulate devil you are tonight.
Did you, did you call it a cold second quarter?
I did. I think the only numbers that went up in our quarter were classroom disturbances and I think it's because our kids have been, been in the classrooms lately. Usually at lunch, we let our kids out to have a little bit of free air and run around a little. Back in our elementary days, I let them have recess during lunch, but lately they haven't been going out. So they've been a little rambunctious in the classroom lately and that's the only numbers that have been going up. It's cold to us. I don't know why.
That's fine. We finally learned frequent flyer and just trying to understand what cold was. It's not like we have to talk about global warming.
And like we said in the first time, we did our first quarter report with our, our kids who we see, we're working as an administration team very hard on the interventions we could be in place for these kids. I think we're down to about 29 kids who we're continually talking about and we, I believe there's 12 out of the 29 we have put in, in a plan for these kids to help them be more successful and we're continually talking about what we do for the other ones that are kind of targeted and we see quite frequently.
Questions from the board?
Super, thank you, Katie.
Can't you add?
Andy's done.
He has to stay here. I think you're on next.
Sure.
There you go.
Okay, well, I'm going to discuss our, our alternative education programming. We celebrated 12 graduates from fall semester in the adult ed program who earned their high school diplomas and seven of them are going on to college. 90% of the total number of students for fall semester pass our classes and earn credit and 98% of all classes taken and finished reflect passing grades. So we continue to see those that fail in the program are doing so due strictly to attendance issues, but even, even those are minimal in our program. For world studies, 16 out of the 22 freshmen passed and earned full credit in the world studies program and that same number of students are academically on track after semester one. Another four are within one credit of being on track. And I think this is encouraging because most, if not all of those 22 students were failing course subjects as eighth graders and with the help of identifying them early in the transition that Blake spoke of with the middle school staff, through lift and world studies, now 91% are finding success and we're happy about that. We do have two students who are in serious academic jeopardy. One of the students has been placed in the EH program and the other, we filed a child in need of services petition for truancy and he's court ordered to attend school. So we have some issues that we're, we're dealing with and, and working on. The other four students who failed have been placed in literacy lab and are working individually with a reading specialist. Our school to community counselor has been conducting group counseling along, weekly group counseling along with individual sessions with a lot of these students. And the world studies teachers are still seeing the benefits of the Camp Dakota trip where they're referencing respect, diversity, community bonds, and team building within the curriculum they're covering. I'm going to shift to the GED testing center. The number who are accessing the Londonderry Testing Center for GED continues to grow rapidly. In the 2006 calendar year, 110 people took the GED test with 95 of those passing and earning their certificates. Already in 2007, we've had 23 take the test with 14 passing it and six awaiting their results and a total of 230 individuals have earned GED certificates in three years at Londonderry. We're very proud of that. Those 2006 statistics are our most prolific to date and have direct correlation with the amount of individuals testing from the United States Army recruiting stations, in fact, were the first contact for recruiting stations from all over New Hampshire. The director of the US Army National Guard in Concord contacted our center due to positive references across the state and wants to exclusively use our testing site because of the flexible scheduling hours for their recruits. Any calls that are directed to the Department of Education for GED testing have also been directed to Londonderry, again because of the convenience and flexibility. We're currently averaging four testers per week in 2007 and that's up from two testers a week last year, so we think those numbers are really going to continue to grow. The adult ed program in the spring, we initially offered 14 classes with 11 of them running and we anticipate 30 students will graduate from the program this June. That's our largest graduating class to date. There are 41 night students signed up and 31 day students taking a combined 116 enrollment spots and that's a total increase of 50% from last spring. For the day students, we sent out 93 letters to students who could benefit from taking night courses and provided follow-up consultations with the guidance counselors. One third of these students decided to take advantage of the program and that's a credit to the guidance staff who work directly with the families and contacting them and facilitating meetings for credit recovery. So we're happy to see that. Many of our night school, night school students are accessing opportunities beyond the walls of the classroom as well. We have several internships in the food and beverage industry, nursing homes, veterinary clinics, and in the automotive and agricultural fields. Students are taking independent studies, doing community service, and taking online correspondence courses at accredited institutions. The career and technical opportunities that exist for them at the Manchester School of Technology and Alveron High School have also been beneficial as students are seeking certification in architecture, plumbing, and electrical contracting. Two of our graduates will obtain the 20 credit adult ed diploma as well as earn college credits at New Hampshire Technical Institute in Nashua, thanks to the Bridges Program, and one will earn his diploma finishing up two certification classes at MST. These aforementioned opportunities continue to grow and coincide with the vision of adult ed programming. Finally, we'll be meeting in March with the middle school staff to identify incoming freshmen who could benefit from the lift program this summer and we anticipate around 40 names will surface from that meeting, which is consistent with last year. So with these programs, we're moving in a positive direction. We're excited that we're doing good work for students and individuals all across the state. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board?
Jay?
Just clarification on the adult education enrollment. You said that the response to the solicitation for some students at risk to participate in the program was about a third and that was about a 50% increase over the previous years?
The 50% increase is the total number. We had 48 students last spring, we have 72 this spring. The number that went up a third were our day students accessing night classes. I was frustrated, to be honest, with the fall, we only had nine day students taking night classes for credit recovery. Clearly, we had more than nine students that needed to make up the classes they had failed previously. This year, we looked at first semester failure rates in the classes that we were offering. We sent out the 93 letters to individuals that could benefit from the program. Guidance counselors were contacting these families and 31 of them took us up on the offer. So, so we're seeing a sort of an explosion with the day students taking, taking the night classes, which is what we were hoping for all along, that there would be a balance in the adult ed program with day students accessing night classes as well as our full-time students.
And did attribute a little more success this time around to anything in particular?
Well, I think, again, the individual meetings with students from the guidance staff, the calls home, the letters home, that pressure frankly, that we put on them to make up the classes right away and not wait to, you know, down the road to try to build it into their schedules later or where they're falling maybe two or three classes behind and then all of a sudden you're considering other options. We're really trying to nip it in the bud.
And this spans across sophomores, juniors, and seniors?
That's correct. And freshmen, actually, we're offering world history after school, 2:30 to 4:00. The students can then access the activity bus, the late bus at 4 o'clock, pretty much five days a week, but we run the classes Tuesday and Thursday from 2:30 to 4:00. So we're seeing some freshmen taking wellness, which is the health and PE class, world history, and some of the other classes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah?
Jason, did you say that we have 40 identified children taking the lift program?
Yes, we identified 43 last year. 28 of those signed up.
That's about 8% of our population thereabouts. I forget, how do we identify them? It's based on recommendation coming out of the middle school?
That's correct. Yep, we meet with the middle school staff.
So those we believe may be, I hate to use the word before they even start, but a little bit at risk for their freshman year?
Yes. And that, and, and part of that at risk definite, definition is not only academically, but with attendance, behavior, organizational skills, and things like that. We sort of look at the whole picture to see what kids could benefit from the program because those are the things that we instill in them hopefully over the five weeks in the summer.
Maybe I'm off track with this, but this is my last question. So we put them in, well, we recommend they participate in the lift program?
That's correct.
And we can't force them to, but it's voluntary. When we place them in course selection in the high school, do we look specifically at what might benefit those 40 students in courses?
Yes.
I know we have required, but I'm saying, maybe in classroom settings.
Yep. 24 of the 28 initially went into the world studies program, which is that next step, excuse me, in the fall, four where we're taking replacement courses or lower level courses.
And it looks like they did pretty well.
Yes.
For those that, okay.
Absolutely. As Katie mentioned in the behavior report, and I do, do kind of want to, we're talking about as far as future considerations, we still have that population of freshman and sophomore students that don't necessarily belong to the world studies program, aren't in our transition room or accessing the EH program and that is a good chunk of kids that, that take up tremendous resources and we need to find an avenue for them. And I don't know if that is through an alternative education program that's similar to EH or trans, but we want to at least explore that to see what we can do for this group of students.
That's kind of an exciting idea.
Very much so.
Maybe something one step up from world studies, but challenging enough that, that's, that's a great idea. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Jay and Katie, thank you very much. Katie, you were an able assistant.
I'm sorry, do you have anything you want to add?
I've got, I've got one more thing. Mary, you ready? She doesn't know what I'm going to do, so I cut your attention. Just to have the record show, I'd like to make a motion, so I need to have someone as the chair. So if you can have the record show that Pardon Mo Golan is the chair at 9:45. And I'd like to make a motion that we go into non-public under RSA 91A colon 3, section 2, A through F.
Second?
We have, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye, Steve Young.
I have a question.
Oh, good question.
What about the transportation contract?
Oh, we didn't do a transportation contract. Now we're non-public, what are we going to do? Withdraw your second?
Sure. Withdraw the second.
Okay. I withdraw my first.
Oh.
No, keep it. I'll do this. I'll make a motion to talk about the transportation contract, what are we going to do? I just jumped ahead. I kept looking at the clock.
Oh, okay. I thought you were.
I'm not in charge.
Didn't want to discuss it tonight.
Let's go.
Okay.
Who's going to talk about it?
Brian?
Think him.
It's your big moment, Paul.
A little nervous there, Kim?
Sorry. Thought you sat there for all night for nothing. I can't talk without asking him permission, so I couldn't stop.
Good evening. I am here to present our recommendation for the special transportation contract and you have a memo outlining the steps that we've taken throughout the fall and early winter in your board packet toward that end. As the board will recall, we are currently in our third year of a three-year contract with our current vendor, The Provider Enterprises. That contract calls for a possibility of a two-year extension. This fall, we entered negotiations for a two-year extension with the provider and we were unable to come up with acceptable terms. To that end, we prepared a request for proposal, contacted the Department of Transportation to get a list of all of the authorized special transportation vendors in the state of New Hampshire, sent out our proposals, and got three complete packets back. After reviewing, comparing, and clarifying details with the three vendors who submitted proposals, we decided to enter contract negotiations once again with The Provider Enterprises. Once the request for proposal was selected, Peter, Brian, and I met with management from The Provider at the beginning of last week on the 13th of February. At this time, it's my recommendation to the board that the contract negotiated with The Provider would provide quality transportation service for the most competitive costs. On the second page of your memo are the listed rates that we have negotiated with The Provider for a five-year contract commencing July 1 of 2007. For fiscal year '08, the rate per bus per day for in-district transportation For fiscal year oh-eight, the rate per bus per day for in-district transportation would be a hundred and seventy-five dollars, with then a ten-dollar increase for the next four years after that. It is worth noting that by locking into a five-year contract, which we have also with Goffstown Trucking, we would be guaranteeing the Londonderry School District a fiscal year twelve rate of two-hundred-and-fifteen dollars per bus, which is very competitive with the current rates that we receive from the other vendors in their RFP for fiscal year oh-eight. The contract negotiated provides for monitors on all of our in-district buses, which we feel is necessary to provide for the safety of the children on the bus, who all have a variety of educational disabilities and medical issues that call for that second pair of eyes on the bus. It also provides for monitors on specific out-of-district runs that would require such a related service. And the contract incorporates two new forms of technology, which we believe would greatly enhance and protect the safety of our students. One is the empty bus alarm, which allows for a bus driver to, at the end of their route, get up, turn off the alarm, and make sure that no students are left on the bus. And GPS. GPS allows for real-time data tracking of speed of the buses, location of the buses, whether or not pickup arrival time from home to school and back are accurate. It guarantees that our children are not on a bus for an unacceptable amount of time, that the route is the most efficient route that the vendor can produce for us. And included in the contract is special transportation for our extended-year program that runs through the summer. We currently anticipate transporting a hundred and thirty-five in-district students and fifteen out-of-district students to twelve out-of-district placements. The negotiated contract includes a provision that would allow us to seek other vendors for out-of-district runs to ensure the most competitive rate for the out-of-district runs, while allowing the provider first right of refusal for them to then match any bid that we got for an out-of-district run. Given the negotiated contract, the amount budgeted for special transportation for the fiscal year oh-eight continues to be an appropriate amount. And I have with me tonight Katie Scholes, Vice President of The Provider Enterprises. And literally, hot off the press, Katie brought it in with her when she came here around eight-thirty, is the draft of the contract. We received the first draft from the provider Friday morning and had our attorney, Gordon Graham, review the contract. He had several points that he felt needed clarification or tweaking. We worked on that throughout today with Katie, the provider's attorney, and there are two additional points that we had discussed and agreed upon that did not make it into tonight's draft that just need to be finalized. I don't know if, Nate, you want me to, I have copies of it to hand out to the board.
I think that would be a good idea.
And I can just highlight the two pieces that need to be tweaked.
Jay?
While you do that, could you, you did go out to bid with other vendors?
Not a bid per se, a request for proposal.
And you, how many vendors did you go to?
We sent the complete request, the RFP, out to six, and we received three back from Safeway, STS, and The Provider Enterprises.
Thank you.
Dan?
Kim? Why did the negotiations for the two-year extension fail? You said there were some stumbling blocks that we couldn't agree to. Those been addressed in the new contracts, why am I?
There were. At that time, the provider's daily rate for the bus was originally a hundred and ninety-five dollars. That was higher than we had anticipated the increase to be, and we wanted to make sure that there weren't better rates out there. We were extremely aggressive in making sure that what we brought to the board tonight was the very best rate for in-district, out-of-district, the whole package.
So the, the failed negotiations for the extension was simply a rate?
Simply a rate.
I don't want to say simply, but that was the only issue?
Yeah, right, right. There were no service issues.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have anything else you wanted to present, by the way, Kim?
Nope, I just, I want to, once you have, everyone had the contract in hand, I would just point out the two places where it continued to need tweaking. I asked Katie in the hallway earlier, we would have a final copy tomorrow that I could email to the board, so you could see the final copy, but on page... And your pages are not numbered, but on the third page, on section three F, there was some additional language under the right of refusal that just clarified that the district did have the right to go out and secure bids for specific runs, and then the provider would have the first right of refusal to meet that or not meet that. So that was something that we had agreed upon, but just needs to be clarified. And then at the end, simply a termination of the contract due to non-performance clause, which would allow the provider, would allow the district to let the provider know what was unsatisfactory in terms of their performance, give them fifteen days in order to correct that, and failing that would allow the district to terminate the contract. So that will also be added to it.
I just got the first draft from the city lawyer at four o'clock, so I'm typing away, trying to get it all in, and I just forgot to put that. He had suggested that final right to terminate as a final paragraph of the contract, and I just blew over it at the end of the day, so it will be in the final draft.
And just on a side note, other than the bump in the road in our fall negotiations with the rate, the service and the accessibility and the relationship that we've had with the provider has continued to develop and become even more efficient and effective over the course of the three years, and I'm confident that if the board approved this contract, that that relationship would continue to benefit the students that use the special Any other questions?
Any other questions, Dan?
Yeah, Kim on, geez, I, number twenty. It's probably, I don't know, seven pages in.
Yep. The camera, the video?
Yeah, didn't we, didn't we, on all our buses, put cameras on?
As we get new buses that are coming equipped with video surveillance.
That was part of our contract, though, was it not?
Yes.
We don't have to pay for them.
Correct.
This, so this sounds like we're going to have to pay for the cameras on the special ed buses, correct?
If, if we decided that they were necessary, we would work out a negotiated price with the provider.
I think the difference is on our, on the larger buses, there's no monitors.
Well, I realize that. Are eight monitors enough to cover all the runs? This contract provides for eight monitors, but I read in here that we're picking up additional students, particularly at Moose Hill.
Right, there's a monitor on every bus for in-district, and currently two on out-of-district buses.
So the eight monitors covers all our buses?
Right, there are no in-district runs to any school without a monitor.
Then I don't see a need for camera. I understand what you're saying. I just saw somewhere in here you put language that there's additional requirements as the Moose Hill population is intended to increase. So eight monitors covers us, in your experience?
It covers us, yep.
Four years from now, it might not, so we'll see. Thank you.
George?
Actually, that was the question. Dan, Dan beat me to it.
It's because you're getting old, George.
Actually, I think I'm older than George, so.
And I'll never be as old as you, Nate.
Pardon me?
I will never catch up to you.
No, you won't.
What'd you say again?
I don't know. I think your AARP thing is right there.
Steve, I'll not do this again. I'd like to make a motion that we support the, and sign tomorrow with the changes, the Articles of Agreement between The Provider Enterprises, Inc. and the district, School District of Londonderry, and changes to be textual at three F, and in addition of a right to terminate.
Termination clause.
Termination clause at the end of the contract, and that'll be emailed around to the board members, and then we can execute that tomorrow and come in and do that.
Second?
Motion. Steve, a second from Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry I scared you. Just wanted to tell her I'm sorry.
And a motion to assess non-public?
Oh, I'm going to start there. I'd like to make a motion that we enter non-public session under RSA ninety-one colon A colon three, section two, A through F.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Steve Young.
One more, Glenn. Thank you. Remember, if you're in this room, you're on the air.
Hey, there you go.